Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the State Council of Needles Public Attorney Authority for the City of Needles, California, Tuesday, September 14th, 2021. There was no executive session tonight. And with that, we have one councilman that's going to be joining us via Teams on the phone. Well, call us, please take the role.
Councilmember Evans Barrett.
Here.
Williams Pageant Belt.
Here.
Longacre.
Here.
Thank you.
It would you please rise for the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge will be led by Councilmember Merritt. Your Honor, thank you for letting us together and taking care of this city's business. Please help us keep your side and your own thoughts as we make these decisions and let us make the best decisions for our communities when we move forward. We love you, Lord, and we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Ready? Begin.
I declare the United States of America and to the Republic from which this is. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any approval of the agenda?
Your Honor, may I? Can I make a request?
Sure.
Okay, I'd like to request a table item two. I talked to a few constituents today and one of them is in the neighborhood there and had a medical, a family medical emergency and would like to address the council if we could table item two until until they can be here.
Okay.
As it's a public hearing, we can continue it to the next meeting.
That works. We'll continue it. Thank you. With two being continued in the next meeting, can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I want to approve the agenda of meeting item two.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Bye, guys. Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Pageant.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
Conflicts of interest on this agenda?
Your Honor, I have one. I have a conflict on on agenda item three under I have a possible job interest that might conflict with that vote. First time in a minute, but.
Okay.
I guess I'm I have a conflict on three also then.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I have a conflict about item nine. I live within 300 feet.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
No, you're not ready yet to.
And Tana. Okay.
Like, oh, I guess.
Any correspondence?
Yes, Your Honor, we do have a correspondence from Barbara Beard regarding agenda item number 22.
Yeah. Thank you. City Attorney.
Provide the council with a response to that anytime.
The 22? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, Barbara. Okay. City Attorney, parliamentary procedures.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. Can you all hear me? Okay, can folks in the audience hear me? See if I can get a little bit clearer. In 1998, the council formally adopted by resolution rules of procedure for conducting its affairs and its meetings. And so those rules of procedures are several pages long, but I'm just going to read some of the key provisions that govern this evening's this evening's meeting. First, the mayor or presiding officer is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all times. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the chair. All questions and remarks should be addressed to the chair. A council member once recognized shall not be interrupted while speaking unless called to order by the presiding officer. The mayor and council members shall accord the utmost courtesy to each other, to city employees, and to the public appearing before the council. No member shall be allowed to speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member choosing to speak thereon shall have spoken. Public members attending council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the council.
Okay, thank you. And the courtes of those in attendance would ask you to set your cell phones to their silent mode. Public appearance, persons wishing to address the city council on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When called by the mayor, please announce your name and address for the record. In order to get a timely meeting, a three-minute time per person has been established by municipal code section two dash eighteen. Members of the California Government Code, Section 54950 prohibits the city council from taking action on an item until it appears on the agenda.
My name is Robert Yi. I live on 20297 Needles. I've been a resident in Needles since 1964. To the City of Needles Council, your Honored Mayor, City Council members. I'm here to invite you to join us on Sunday, October 10th at 10:00 a.m. for a 10-10 flag raising ceremony here at the City Colony Complex. This started 49 years ago with my father, Wang Yi, and will be our 48th flag raising ceremony for the City of Needles. It was agreed upon after 9/11 that it would not be appropriate that year. ROC controlled Taiwan also celebrated here in Needles. With the City of Needles' support, members of the City Council, and people like Bruce Wheatley, Bill Ye, Merle Ampel, Edward Pageant, Rick Daniels, and myself, it has grown from a gathering of a few people to over 100 people from all over California, Nevada, Arizona, Texas, and Taiwan. I would appreciate, especially likely to thank the Republic Thank the Republic of China's Los Angeles chapter of the Air Force Veterans Association for their work and dedication and continued support. They also give an endowment to the Needles High School Band every year. I hope y'all see y'all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. And.
10:10.
Yeah. Every year. Any other public appearance? All right, seeing that, we'll move on to public hearing. I'm sorry. Step up here. It's not on the agenda. This is your time. You bet. No problem.
Signing or something. Hey, my name's.
Here you go.
My name's Steve Pratt. I'm the onsite resident manager at All Seasons Storage in Needles since February 2020, and I've had an ongoing problem. One of our neighbors, the Healing Center Marijuana Store, which is open from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., 365 days a year, has customers mostly commercial truck drivers and people in other large vehicles with trailers that park on my tenant next to our property on Ray Street on the north side. And in one of my tenants, which is Greens Electric's lot, they block Greens Electric, they block our gate, they litter frequently, including urine bottles. And they urinate. I have a picture, if you guys ever need it, of a guy that I confronted urinating. That was a truck driver. And I have regular confrontations with these people, including a physical one last year, where the guy charged me and knocked my phone into the road as do the the manager and the fellows at Greens Electric, where people are blocking our business and disrupting it and parking on our property to buy marijuana at the store. So. So I'd like to see if we could get some no parking signs put on the north side of Ray Street that borders All Seasons Storage and Greens Electric Supply.
Okay.
Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your part.
And I don't I don't need that picture. Any other public appearances? Seeing that, we'll move on to the public hearing. Number one is a public hearing notice consider all evidence and testimony for or against the approval of a conditional use permit for the installation of a digital billboard approximately seven by 14 at 429 North K Street assesses parcel number 018506708. And the vice mayor has a conflict on this one due to the greenhouse that he owns right there on the other corner. That will be a staff report.
Honorable men, city council members, in front of you, we have resolution 21-47 for a visual advertising sign today, September 14th, 2021. Again, as stated, resolution number 2021 at the previously stated address. The project site is located in the entrance to the state of California, also known as the Needles Bridge. It's in a developed area of the city and is a gateway to the City of Needles. Here's the site. It's currently a to the north of the site. Let's sit back. To the north of the site, you're going to see that there's commercial areas. To the south of the site, you're going to see that there's residential. To the west of the site, you're going to see that there's commercial. And then to the right is currently vacant land that CRR zoned, so commercial zoned land. And then again, here's the parcel in question. So the applicant has applied for a conditional use permit. The billboard sign is 14 foot by 20 foot approximately. It's located on a .15 acre lot on the corner of an intersection with setbacks sufficient so that the site falls. The owners will remain on the owner's property. Site is located within the general commercial zoning, which permits the the project. And then the outdoor advertising sign is consistent with the general plan as it promotes development for local events and recreational activities. Here's the site plan itself as.
Yeah, they're here.
Is to the south of this image, and then to the west is North K Street. Here's the site as it currently exists today. You've got signage, you've got a transformer, you've got palm trees, things of that nature. Here's another site. You've got illegal vendors on the site as well. So here's some photos of the elevations of what we're talking about. So as you can see the from the side, it's about three feet wide, and then the length is about 20 feet tall. And so at the bottom, at the base, the the water feature, it was not recommended by the planning commission, but at the base will be a nine foot by approximately 16 foot base that would would be the foundation of the of the sign. So the condition that had been added that there's desert theme landscaping using low volume water plants due to the drought conditions, the water feature was recommended to be replaced with a waterless feature because of severe drought conditions in California. Here's what was presented. This is what was provided to us after the planning commission meeting. So as you can see, it doesn't have the landscaping that was approved, but I'll show you what that looks like. But this does have the waterless feature of the billboard and here's the landscape plan that was approved by the planning commission. You got three different types of plants that can be found throughout the area. So here's what the proposed site plan that the planning commission reviewed. So don't focus on the water feature, but focus on landscaping that was provided to the planning commission. So this is part of their recommendation that the landscaping be a part of this project. So like any conditional use permit, it's required to meet these seven different standards. So the first is that it's within the jurisdiction, and it is. The second is that the application is complete, which it is. The third is that it meets, it's consistent with the general plan. It conforms to the general plan. The proposed project site does meet the general plan standards because it's a promotion of development and recreational activities within the city. The development is in harmony with the area in which it's located. So it's in developed portion of the city. It's at at an intersection where a commercial activity does occur and with proposed development occurring in that area. The fifth finding that needs to be found is the development is not materially endanger the public health or safety. So the project is at the corner of an intersection with sufficient setbacks, and it will remain on the owner's property. So we do not find that it endangers the public health and safety. The development will not substantially injure the value of adjoining abutting properties. So as I stated, that it's properly zoned. It's general commercial C2 zoning and is surrounded by commercial zoning, which leads to all the other commercial activities in the area. The project site will be conditioned with the desert theme landscape using low volume plants due to the drought conditions. This requirement is consistent with maintaining the value of the joint properties. And then finally, does the overall proceedings, are they consistent? So we do find that the project findings discussed in detail regarding the compatibility with the other uses in the area makes this consistent with the preceding findings. So the planning commission on August 4, 2021, the comments including expressing concerns of the intersection, including accidents occurring, lack of traffic controls, turn lanes, things of that nature. The planning commission excluded the proposed water feature in their recommendation as previously stated because of the water conservation measures. And so it was recommended for approval with the majority vote at the August 4, 2021 council or planning commission, sorry. So the recommended action is to approve resolution 2021-47 for a CUP of a digital outdoor advertising sign at the corner of River Road and North K Street, also known as APN 018506708000 in the C2 commercial zone. I am now ready for any questions that you might have. The applicant is also here to provide a presentation to the city council.
Great. Does the council have any questions of staff?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Are the palm trees staying or are they taking those out?
That's something that, as you can see on the.
Does it just? The shows palm trees behind them. Are those going to be in there? Or that's later. That's just.
Here's the here's what the landscape plan looks like as well. That's what the.
I think she was talking about the current.
Those three in the front?
Right. So I'll let the applicant provide that information, but looking at the landscape plan, I do not see them.
In the.
That's correct.
All right.
Tell me your name.
Jeff West. 30950 Long Point Drive, Canyon Lake, California. And your question was about the palm trees.
Three that are currently there.
We're going to remove one of them, and we're going to trim the other ones up real nice and tight because I don't want the palm fronds to fall down and hit them.
And then are they the palm tree and the other ones? Are those just for effects for that picture? You're not adding any more into the back of it?
Not at this.
Not at this time. Okay.
Until the drought's over.
All right.
Okay. Do you have a question for staff?
Yeah, I know I have a staff or you. I know I've got a lot of concern constituents that have worried about where it was and the accidents. And I know the studies have been made and everything. Is it a possibility to maybe move it closer to the bridge? Is that a possibility?
It's I'm trying to get the traffic that's going to the golf course and to the boat ramps for my development there that I plan on submitting in the next couple of weeks.
That's what I.
So that's kind of why I'm located there and it's.
What about closer to the golf course?
I wouldn't actually be catching them on the corner, though. So it's kind of it's actually the best location.
I know. I know. Yes.
You know. And it has auto dimmers, you know, so there's timers that'll adjust. It's actually brighter in the daytime. And then as the sun sets, it'll automatically adjust and has safety features for that. And it's it's a smart sign. It's new technology.
Go ahead, Kristen.
Um, my question is just about the water feature. You said that when the drought's over, like, is it gonna? Yeah, I think it's beautiful. Do you think the water feature, is it like still embedded in it? So it's still like turn it on or off or is it you just?
Once we hopefully, once we, once we do the development, I can maybe come back and see if you guys will approve the water feature. I would love it. Everyone I've talked to loves it. It's a lot of thought and design went into this. We took a you know, there's a lot into it, and it's beautiful. And I want people to to know that it's Needles, you know, we're putting something new and something fresh and something nobody has. And to remember it, to come back and spend their money here and enjoy vacationing and buy a house, buy some gas.
And the only reason I mention is because I think it's a showstopper with the water feature. I think it's a really nice sign and my personal opinion is that the brings a lot of value and it shows that you're really serious about moving forward with this. So.
Patrick said you have a presentation. You want to do that now before we open a public comment?
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Hi, Ellen.
Hold on, Ellen. Hold on.
We're going to be.
I wanted to say I sat in on the planning commission on this event, and I want to just commend the developers for the quick change in three days when they were asked to check the water feature. I too love the water feature. I too love the sign. I don't think it poses any danger at all. And where my other home was in Rialto, we had a sign beside the size of a billboard on the off ramp that no one ever crashed looking at.
Ellen, hold on just a minute. Whoever else, can you please mute your calls unless you're speaking? Ellen Campbell has a floor right now. Councilmember Campbell. Thank you. Go ahead, Ellen. We're having trouble hearing you.
I'm sorry. I'll start I'll start over. I was in the planning commission when this sign was presented. And I want to commend the builders for making that quick change from the water not to having water to not having the base to having the base. And they did it all in three days. They were very cooperative, worked hard. The sign's beautiful. It brings our town up to the 21st century, which is really nice. And I look forward to the water feature coming in back later also. Where I had my second home in Rialto, we have an office in Needles and Redlands, and they have these big mega signs that are the size of buildings on the sides of freeways, and they don't stop traffic. They don't cause accidents. They're, you know, they flash things. You subliminally see those things anyway, but I think that this is going to be a beautiful asset to our town. And and it's going to offer, you know, other features also. So I'm very excited about the sign. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
My my question is, I like the sign. It's fine. You're going to clean up that corner real good. What about the rest of the lot? Question is, first of all, I would not eat it right now. My my reason being is that two lane road that runs right next to that property, you're taking it for the traffic that goes in and out of it in order to put rooftops here and build our city. We have to be inviting it, and right now that area isn't.
What I'm doing is I have a planned development, 128 single-family resident RV resort planned for the rest of the 14 acres. I will be submitting here in the next couple of weeks. I've been working on it for a couple of years. And so it will be cleaned up.
So you're you're shovels to dirt. Let's get it.
Moving forward, quick as possible.
Thank you.
I want to I want this thing to go quickly and bring something good to the city, you know, beautiful.
All right.
That's all you're.
Can I ask them else?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there a way? How do we know how much water it actually would use? Because I mean, this is a great feature. If it's recycled water, could it usually just be used?
It's actually about a toilet bowl flush a day in waste.
Yeah. So why is this?
It's it's really not.
I mean, we use a lot more on.
Very much because it recycles.
I mean, I know there's some thought about maybe people bathing in it. I've heard things like, you know, it could be.
And I would shut it off at certain times. Obviously, if it's windy, you know, you don't want to have water going and wind because it'll waste it. Certain hours, there won't be much traffic, so we'll shut it down. So it won't be 24 hours a day.
But yeah, it's a toilet bowl of worship.
Eight, and it's not negotiable.
This is a beautiful sign.
It's about seven gallons.
I mean, why don't we go for the?
I responded.
Yeah.
We're in the middle of the worst drought that we've seen in our lifetime. And we're on the verge of state imposed water conservation measures. The Colorado River is at a, I mean, lake needs at 37%. And it just seemed to me that having a a signed water feature is the wrong message to be sending. Water is for use on plants, people, and not as.
I know. I get.
But it's your call.
But I mean.
May I? Vegas is really in trouble then.
Then the second part, if for some reason, could we impose, if you don't get that next part done, because I mean, people have come to us saying they're going to do a lot of things. Could you could we get in there that you'll at least weed those weeds down?
Yeah.
Weed the weeds?
Yeah. We'll take care of that.
So then at least if it doesn't count, you know, whatever happens in your. Okay.
Wait.
I agree with Tana and I also agree with Rick. That being said, when you build it, can't you just plummet it and keep it off until it's a.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and plummet. I'll plummet for that. And then when you guys allow me to, when we're not in such a drought, I guess.
Probably accepted.
You would love to do it. I mean, it just it brings everyone's eyes to it, and it's it's beautiful, you know, it's the river. So someone sees that before they see the river. It's kind of like.
I was hoping you weren't going to build it and then come back and plummet it. It'll all be ready to go.
I'll put it in there. It's it's cheap to do when you're building it.
Yeah.
You know, stub that out.
All right.
We like the water. I know.
Nothing? You're good? Okay.
Could be in request.
Good.
That's it?
Okay, we'll open it for public hearing then.
Very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Barbara Beard, 213 Safari. I was going to come up here and tell you how gorgeous I, when I saw the renderings with the water, how gorgeous it was and what a difference it made to take away that water feature. That's how it came to us without it. We did not ask that it not have water. That's how it was being proposed. So the implication was that we took the water off of it. That's not what happened. So and I believe Ellen Campbell was there, and she would have been aware of that. So there was some ambiguity when Mr. Martinez presented it. It kept coming up that the planning commission said they didn't want water, and that was not the case. We were not given a choice. Mr. West had had three days to submit renderings without the water because the city asked them to do that. Okay? So I think it's with the water. It's gorgeous. It's his property. It's his sign. And we're selling water to other companies that aren't even here, like PG&E, a company called Shamrock. I don't know if we ran them. They're taking water out of the meter over by our new fire department where I live. I've caught them. And city manager's aware of that. PG&E just got through taking what they needed. Apparently, I caught them in the act again. And there's now another company involved that we didn't know who they were. So these are people, strangers, that we're selling water to when we're trying to prevent one person from running water on his own sign on his own property. And like you said, the usage is very low. Okay, and recycled, and it's absolutely gorgeous. And I think if anybody gets out of the City of Needles, and I'm sure most of us do, to go shopping for groceries and whatnot, we see signs all over the place like this. They're not a distraction. We're used to it. We're grownups in the 21st century, and there are flashing signs all over the place. So I don't think it's a distraction. I think it's a piece of beautiful architecture going on a very key corner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rick, real quick, when he's coming up, can you clarify it's it's recycled water?
No, I don't know. I don't.
It's not recycled, right?
So normally, normally with a fountain, normally with a fountain, I think what she meant by recycle is the water is recycled.
He's going over again.
But there's evaporation.
Right, right.
Recycle?
Right.
Evaporation rate is copped out about seven gallons a day, which is about a toilet bowl flush.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Yeah.
We got a motion in a second.
Hi, my name's Keith Jones, 837 Beach Drive, Needles. I spoke on this at the planning commission. That intersection is, and I'm not against the sign, without a doubt, the most dangerous intersection, Needles. I talked about a few things we could do to make it safer. Right-hand turn-only signs at those parking lots in the area. Extending the left-hand turn lanes and a traffic review and maybe changing of the light timing. I'd like to see those things done tied to the permit for the sign. Safety's important and didn't plan on talking on this part, but seems to be a big point. The drought is is here. It's real. It affects us. Would the water come out of the the bad well or the good well? Just William One or the bad wells or what? The recycling is obvious. The evaporation rate for Needles is going to be more than a toilet bowl because but safety is my primary thing for the intersection. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
And any other public comments? Can you see it? Then we'll bring it back to the council. I'm going to close the public hearing. Go ahead, Zach.
A few of his traffic requests are are actually in in my request for at the end of session. So they're definitely being looked at.
Mr. Mayor, let me, let me address that because after, uh, after the planning commission, we did a site visit and looked, uh, while we are doing the transportation element update of the general plan. So based on traffic counts down there, we know that 14,000 cars a day go through that intersection, which is the busiest intersection in the city. We, we also know that, uh, that, that all the things that Mr. Jones raised, uh, restriping to lengthen the turn lane, but right now you can only, uh, have about three cars in the refuge lane. Therefore, they then block the through lane. Um, so we should have at your next meeting, a traffic report, uh, traffic engineering study, uh, done by our city engineer that will make, uh, recommendations uh, on how to solve. So we took Mr. Jones's comments safely and we'll have those at your next meeting.
Excellent. Thank you.
That was all my thing, Dylan. Hi, I'm Ellen. Um, I, I, um, I wanted to say something, then I would say something else. I wanted to say that I did, um, I did hear Mr. Jones also and talk to Rick about what it was going to take to make. We just can't make those right-hand turn onlys. There has to be, the, uh, traffic study has to be done and that's all being worked on. The, the light, getting the light changed, the timing changed, the dedicated left-hand turn lane. This is all implemented and moving forward already. So I just wanted to calm his concerns about that. And, um, I would like to, um, make a motion to, um, approve this sign, um, with the water plumbed in there, ready to go when we can do it.
Okay, we have a motion. Go ahead, Patrick.
There's also a comment about the time period after the weeds. If, if there's a period of time, the weeds gotta be removed. What's the period of time we'd like to see that? If you want that to be a part of the motion, please clarify.
How long do you say? How long does he say he can do it in? We might play here. We can be reasonable. Two months?
Ninety days?
Ninety days, ninety days.
Ninety days is probably a mention.
Ninety days, okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so my motion is to approve the sign, um, have the water plumbed in, ready to be a fountain and be beautiful for us. And, um, do the, the yard work. That has to be done within 90 days.
Okay.
That's it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longaker?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Number three, public hearing notice to consider all evidence and testimony testimony for or against a conditional use permit. Adding 1,102 square foot cannabis retail biz into an existing gas stations. The floor space located. Going to.
Guys are coming back.
Yeah, I was coming back. So we still got it. Sorry. Uh, located existing mobile gas station at 1,005 East Broadway, APN 018621407. And then C2 commercial, general commercial zone. Applicant is Jason. Represented for the gas station, Staffordburg.
Honorable man, councilmembers in front, we have resolution 2021-53 regarding 1,005 East Broadway for a retail cannabis business. The project site is located, uh, in the city of Needles, on the east end of the city, on the off ramp next to the I-40 and East Broadway. So as you can see, to the east is commercial, our, our commercial properties. To the south is the interstate highway with the cemetery. To the north are vacant residential parcels followed with residential parcels and then gas stations to the north as well. So there's a commercial activity to the north and to the east and then to the south that's interstate and then some residential to the north, uh, the northwest area. So the existing gas station, uh, is what we're talking about right now. It's the mobile includes, um, areas, as, as I stated, surrounded with commercial activity located off the East Broadway and San Carlos Street in the city of Needles. So the applicant has applied for 1,100 square foot CUP retail business at the existing mobile gas station, which is 1,843 square feet. The, uh, the gas station operation, business activities will not continue inside the structure if this is approved by the city councils.
Um, it's.
Nine acres is located within the C2 zoning, which permits this kind of retail business cannabis activity. The site includes eight, uh, parking spaces and is within 700 feet of a transit, which required onsite parking spaces are reduced. Phase two of the project would add additional 10 parking spaces. The project will employ eight employees full-time and will operate seven days a week, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Here's the site as it exists today. You can see from off of Broadway facing towards a project. Uh, it's a food mart and a mobile gas station. Here's another photo. As I had stated, the gas station component will remain, but will only be operated from outside with ATM with credit cards. Then here's, here's a picture from afar facing the interstate highway. So as you can see here, here's the site plan. There's, um, there's plants that are located in various areas of planters. And we'll take a look at that. But the most important thing is just to see where it's situated. Floor plan of the existing building, um, as you can see, there's going to be a lobby area. There's a 1,102 square foot, uh, retail area. The unisex bathroom, there are two. There's one accessible from the inside and there's one accessible from the outside. It's, it's law that requires a gas station to provide bathrooms to its patrons, to its customers. And so that what, at, uh, at the planning commission, um, this was a request that was added. And so the site plan currently, or the floor plan currently features a bathroom for the inside and for the outside. Here's a landscape plan. As you can see, uh, low water use planning will be found throughout the area and covered with desert tan gravel. So the project's.
And so, yeah, the.
Operator staffing is available at the entry points to the retail cannabis business during operating hours. And, uh, as you come into the business, you want to make, because it might be misconstrued that it's also a gas station and it's a quickie mart still, but they will have, uh, they will have staff that limits that ability from individuals that are underage. Not allow.
Um, the increase.
Security to take care of that. Additional extra lighting, security systems will be in place. The prohibit of distribution of minors and then a signage will be, has been recommended to be posted to deter entrance into the dispensary for minors. Uh, remove and replace existing sidewalk, pedestrian ramp, curb and gutter. Um, this has been deferred, uh, for 18 months. And so they will be fixing the sidewalk around the property. But at this time, they're going to get up and running and then get the funds available to be able to do that. Uh, the sale of alcohol is illegal when you've got a cannabis, uh, business. And so they will no longer be able to, uh, sell alcohol. So again, like every conditional use permit, there are seven, uh, findings that have to be made in order to justify a project. So yes, it's within the jurisdiction. The application is complete. The development is in conformity with the general plan because the ordinance that was adopted by the city council does allow retail cannabis businesses to operate in the seat, in the general commercial designated zone, which this is found within. Um, the development is in harmony with which it is located.
We're all together in a.
A portion of the city on the nine point, uh, point nine acre parcel is utilizing the gas station. As I had stated, that the, it's badged, um, stringent security requirements to ensure, to limit the access to, uh, individuals that are minors into the area. Uh, the sales of alcohol will cease and new, uh, cannabis facility becomes operational. So therefore, this type of project is consistent using occurring the vicinity of the project site. And so it does not materially endanger the public health. So the project is commercially developed in the area. The conditions of approval have been placed on the project to assure appropriate staffing is available into the entry points in the retail cannabis business during the operation hours. And the facility is secured during non-operation mission hours. Additional conditions of the exterior lighting have been added. And then the project over, is overall consistent with the findings. So the project with findings discussed in detail regarding compatibility with other uses in the area, as we've stated, it's surrounded by commercial activity. And the, uh, the general plan and the zoning is consistent. Therefore, uh, the project's overall project is consistent with the preceding findings found in this report. Um, at the planning commission on August 4th, 2021, the planning commission recommended.
Because I, it's a step forward in.
Uh, included requesting clarification on how the gas station and how the retail cannabis business.
At least having someone.
Can function. The gas station functions on the site would be minimal with payment at the pump and eliminate access to interior of the building for individuals not of age. So our recommended action is to approve resolution 2021-53 for a CUP of 1,102 square foot retail cannabis business to be housed within the existing mobile gas station building located at 1,005 East Broadway, also known as APN 0186214070000. That concludes my presentation. The applicant, the owner and the engineer are here, um, to discuss in our. Councilmember, the, the staff findings.
Okay, does the council have any questions for staff?
I do, your honor.
Go ahead, Ellen.
Um, I just just want to note that I was also at this city planning, uh, meeting, uh, with this project. And although there were, I think, two of us in the room that actually knew legally the bathroom had to be there, it was never said out loud. Um, they were just asked if they would consider, because of the gas station, would they consider, um, having a bathroom on the outside? And maybe they should think about having a door coming from the outside and come back with that. And I don't know what happened after that, but in that room that day, um, that was never said. And so I want to, um, thank them for, um, doing it, although.
Right. Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is our.
Right.
Were told that that day. Um, they were told, you are, they were asked, are you willing to do that? And they were. And so I was, uh, pleased with the willingness to, um, make, go back, make changes, um, pay someone to make changes and come back to us again with those changes to get them approved. So I just wanted to, um, say that.
Thank you. You have something, Kristen?
I have a question for staff. Um, so I know this is across the street from, um, where we want to have a grocery store come in and where we're working on that. Um, how, how does that, I know maybe this isn't a staff question, maybe I'm just spit firing, but how does that affect like potential other businesses that are coming into town right around there? How do they feel about it? What's like the staff impression that we've gotten about this?
Well, good question. And so basically, this is the way it looks today. They're going to be redoing the curbs. They're going to be redoing the sidewalks. They're going to be adding landscapes. So if anything, it's going to beautify the area. And so it's going to add value to that property. And so we want it to be, we don't want ISOs. Not saying your property is an ISO, but I'm just saying this, there's a, there's an opportunity here to add value to that property by, by adding these conditions of, you know, having new curbs, new sidewalks, adding landscaping to the area. And so that, that's my answer.
Um, so, but have you guys, has staff heard any pushbacks from other businesses that have been applying for things?
No, Atlas Development who owns.
About Tupperware?
So you was notified, uh, by mail. So we didn't hear any.
You can help with that too, and may, let me first run back down. You go there, you get munchies, you go across the street. The groceries are dominant, you're good to go.
Yep. And, and also. Have a gas station.
Hold on, wait.
Your honor.
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, but the law says 600 feet from interstate, you have to have an, uh, uh, working restroom, correct?
Right. The, the state law is if you're within 400 feet of a state highway or 600 feet from, uh, you're required to have, uh, publicly available.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm not a big fan of this. Uh, just because of the location. I don't think the location is coherent with the neighborhood. Um, correct me if I'm wrong here. The owner of this also owns three other buildings right there, right? All four gas stations, including the, the old Whiting Brothers, correct?
Yeah.
What, the Chevron seems like a better location. I would rather not have it there, but the Chevron would be, I, in my opinion, would be a better location. It is a Chevron, correct?
Yeah.
Um, just a little bit more away from the neighborhood. Uh, there's not a dispensary in that neighborhood. Um, pretty soon, I guess there's going to be one in every, every other door. I don't know. Um, but I just believe that this location is not coherent with that neighborhood. Um, I, I, I believe that the, the Chevron would be better. I, I, that's my opinion. And if that was possible.
But I don't think we've opened the public hearing yet.
Yeah.
I think this is the opportunity for councilmen to ask. Yeah, it's.
Do you know more questions for staff? We're open for a public hearing. The comments, he's in the public comment sections. You'd like to come up and address that if you have a.
Yeah.
Yes.
Longaker?
Yes.
So on, on that, on the east end of town, there's, you know, we have three gas stations and mobile is, I'm trying to get something just to keep, the mobile's the weakest out of the three. So I'm trying to get something going there to, to keep it alive, keep it going. The gas sales isn't, it's just, it's not the best at that location. Chevron actually is the best because it has the big lot for the trucks, trailers, motor homes. It just, it has a big lot.
All right, so. Which fits, fits right into my opinion there because you would leave the pumps there also. I would assume if you were to do it there, more parking and with flavor of India, that is a nightmare. You've seen it, Jason. I've seen you working, running, running your butt off there. Little do you know, I, I spent a lot of. For you.
Yeah.
But, um, flavor of India creates a nightmare. I have literally been trapped on that street in between semis and the, almost lost my, you know what?
Yeah.
Um, and it just seems like the Chevron has a lot more parking there. Um, I just think it would be better over there. I, I, if it's possible. I, I, I don't really like this location at all, if I'm going to be honest.
Yeah. Well, you know, being in, in the, in the trenches, I think the, the mobile would be the best, in my opinion, for it because the Chevron is just, it, it does good in the gas sales. It does good in the store sales. That, that's a thriving location. The Shell's a thriving location. The mobile, it's not, it's, it's the weakest out of three. So it doesn't have diesel there. That's another thing. So if I can, I'm, I'm just trying to get something going to keep all three generating enough in, income to keep it going, basically. You know, because it's just, that end of town isn't the busiest and three gas stations, it just, it can't handle three. So if I can get something going to keep it, keep it alive, keep that corner looking good, that, that's my goal.
I know it looked good. I just, instead of sending Needles, I don't like the location being, I know the Chevron will still be close to the neighborhood, but this one's very close and I, I've heard some constituents from this more high, you know, that's, that's pretty close to our neighborhood and, and there's a lot that are close to neighborhoods. I, I get that. Um, I had, I'm looking out for the, the citizens right there.
Yeah.
Okay, Ellen, did you have something?
I'm just going to tell you that my sister was at the planning commission and came there for them. She lives in Zamora Heights. That's, she lives in the house I used to own and she lives there and she does not have any complaints about it being in there. And, and Zamora Heights is an area that I canvassed very recently. And, uh, I don't have the paperwork with me, but I talked to Rick about it. All of the buildings and all of the homes that are boarded up, the Pete's with no roof. So I, there are a few families in Zamora Heights. There are a couple. And my family is one of them. And, uh, they, they have not had any complaints, um, about it. And so I, I'm not saying that there isn't anyone against it, but I'm.
They're take that $750.
For it. And that showed up at the planning commission to be supportive of the people who were going to, um, be presenting, um, the program. Um, and that's what I want to tell you about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, McGinn, put it, hi, Barbara. Sorry, I should have called you sooner.
I'm Barbara Beard, 23. Yeah, I am.
Go ahead.
Somebody else did. Um, I live right on the other side of Cemetery on Safari.
You want to spray paint them.
It's about that area. Uh, my major happiness, joy feeling is because during the planning commission meeting, the applicant stated that they are going to clean up that corner.
Our artist in the, in the.
Way is constantly full of trash on both sides of the fence. A lot of it comes from the freeway, I'm assuming, because it's on that, on the inside of the fence. But on the property, the mobile station side of the fence, um, all, it's almost always trash up against the fence around the, um, um, what do you call those big cement things, the K rails, K rails? Um, the truckers park there, it's packed full of truckers. We know with they lesions, I, I think this is key. Their locations they stop at on Safari by our new fire station, which I go by several times a day. And they're big yellow milk jugs, okay? They're out there and these people were, they talked about clean that whole area up, it's going to take them eighteen months. And it's going to be encompassed, encompassing an area that the trucks can't park on, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct? So I am looking forward to seeing several acres of land cleaned up that I have to look at every day. And when I go from one end of the town to the other, I jump on the freeway right there and I get off on Broadway or J Street for shortcuts. So I am back and forth on that freeway off ramp, on ramp constantly. And if I'm not, my eye is still going to the trash that's generated over there. That's not going to be there anymore. So also, um, I have, as Mrs. Campbell, Councilwoman Campbell mentioned, there was nothing discussed about two sets of bathrooms. Uh, if that one comment was made, if they were willing, asking if they were willing to do it, I missed it. But we did not ask them to put two sets of bathrooms in.
They did not.
They did not what? They did not agree to
You did not ask them, someone else did.
He did not ask
Somebody in
That came, that The planning commission did not. That came after it, after, okay? So, um, we just, you discussed that on how it got in that language, but that's not the way it was presented to you. We had a discussion about the legality of putting a bathroom over the public inside the borders of a dispensary. You cannot let children in there. The discussion centered around children, young people under the age of eighteen. And I even brought up a hypothetical about what if grandma pulls in, okay? Well, they thought my hypothetical was funny, but I won't go into that, but, um, can I, grandma pulling off the freeway, have you go to the bathroom and fill up? Can I go in there? No, we can't because I'm not going in there to buy pot or you, or buy something. I'm only going in there as to use the restroom as an aside to the gasoline. That's not something they intend under the law to provide for. So if they're going to put bathrooms outside, I think it's a great idea if they have the two sets, but that was not discussed in the planning commission. Thank you.
Their plans now, thank you.
Just, just a reminder, your honor, the process is, um, we have staff report. And then we have council questions for staff and then we open it up for a public comment. That's their opportunity to speak uninterrupted. There's not we try to avoid a back and forth with members of the public. We let them speak and we close public, the public hearing and then it goes back to council.
Right. Mano?
Hello, my name is Manuel Caleroon Jr., two thousand and thirty-three Cortez. Uh, first of all, I want you to know, I'm not against the cannabis industry. If it's done right and the locations are right, uh, my question is if this business gets established, the mobile corporation's been around, I'm fifty-nine years old, probably well before my time. Uh, how does the mobile corporation feel about their building and their signage being tied up in the cannabis industry? And if they pull their signage, do we have a plan or do they have a plan to, uh, proper signage that's, you know, I mean, I don't want to see a sign that says, hey man, we sell weed here or whatever, you know? But, uh, I just wondering how that, that would play out with the mobile corporation.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Sir?
Hi, my name is Matt Reddick. I'm the engineer on this project and want to come up and address that concern. The mobile is a franchise. Uh, Jason Bonner owns the property and the gas stations and the fuel pumps entirely. Um, so that franchise signage or flagship rather will not be there any longer. Currently, right now, we have not submitted any signage permits, uh, through the city to replace the tall pole monument sign. And the new operating entity, a dispensary signage will be fully permitted before it's dressed on the new building and the new establishment. Uh, we're also providing all new lighting and security at that establishment as well, along with the new landscaping to freshen everything up and really bring on a new appeal to that project.
Thank you. Young lady?
Go ahead. I'm Paul Zamora, two thousand and nineteen East Valor, Fort Mojave.
Yeah, thank you.
Really short. So I obviously am a Zamora that is named after my family. We were, my whole family was born and raised in Zamora Heights. And I think this will be great for the community. Our family doesn't live up there anymore, but it's going to bring something to the community. If you go in that area, it is boarded up houses and it's a ran down. A lot of it is very ran down. So it's going to bring something, they're going to remodel a lot of that area. So I think it's going to bring a lot nicer stuff and it might bring more people to the area. So I think that'll bring a lot more to the area than there is now.
Thank you, Paul.
Good evening.
Hey, Steve.
Uh, Steve Moffett, thirty-two Parkway, Needles, California. And my problem is that we, as the city of Needles, voted to limit the number of dispensaries we would have, we limited to five. And if any of them closed, that would be the end of it. Now one is gone. That's also the bill where we passed a ten percent tax. So when I was at a council meeting, they were arguing, they said, we want the tax load and they said, well, no, we passed the bill. And now we're changing it and that opens up everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further public comment? Seeing they'll close the public hearing? And, uh, bring that bring the issue back to the council for discussion deliberation. Wait.
So the mobile is not going to be around, but the, the gas, the gas is still going to be there. Let's, uh, is there a possibility that you don't have gas there ever?
I need you to come up to the mic.
The issue with that is then you're involved in pulling tanks, pulling lines, pulling dispensers, it's
That's where I was getting
Yeah, it, it can be it's just, it'll be a big project and, you know, that's why I'm trying to get something going where I can keep that, keep it going, you know, because the, the way it is right now, like I said, there's if I can have some other, uh, of some other form of cash flow coming in to that particular location, I can keep people employed there. I can keep another building from being closed. I can just keep that whole there, there's just like I mentioned before, there's not enough for three gas stations there. And, you know, in, in order to, that's a big deal to pull those tanks out. I mean, then you just have, you know, it's just something that I just don't feel that it, it would be worth me doing, you know, so
So that, yeah, and that's, if that ever happens, how do you go about that? If you ever say, okay, nobody's buying gas here, I gotta shut them down.
Well, as long as you do your test and as long, I mean, if, if I have something cash flow coming in to pay the bills, the gas can still be there.
Okay.
As long as I do my
Okay, I see what you're saying. Now, it's probably a question you probably can't answer, but, um, if this is not passed, you believe that's going to shut down that mobile?
It could. I mean, um, you know, I try everything in my power, the other two, support the mobile, you know? Um, I've been there fifteen years and I've had, uh, I've been at Shell fifteen years. I've had the mobile and the Chevron for, since two thousand and eleven. Then, you know, it wasn't easy, especially when I first got them, everything was down, you know, so I was, the other Shell was supporting them both at first. Now the Chevron's up, you know, so the Chevron and the Shell's reporting the mobile. So if I can get something going where all three of them su- support themselves, that's my goal. That's what I'm trying to do.
I have a question.
Yeah.
You done? Okay, Alan, go ahead.
Um, Jason, uh, it is my understanding that the pumps are going to be manless, so there'll be credit card only and they will be self-serving, so they will not have to be monitored. People will be able to stop and get gas and go on their way. And is this a twenty-four hour operation? So they will be like, I have been to gas stations at midnight or three o'clock in the morning in other cities where the, you could pump your own gas with your credit card. Is that what your plan is?
Well, we'll, we'll probably shut the mobile down when the, um, well, no, we'll keep, because right now all three of them are open twenty-four hours. So yes, they'll all be twenty-four hours at the pump. That's how it is.
The gas station will be, so the gas will be available to anyone popping off the freeway and they can get gas and put their credit card in and get back on the road.
Yep, and that's how they are right now, because I'm open till midnight at, um, Shell and Chevron on the weekends, ten during the week, and then from ten till six AM, pay at the pump.
So the dispensary closes at a certain time, but the gas pumps will still be open?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from the council?
Question for, um, Rick. Uh, so what Mr. Moffett said about limiting to five dispensaries, I, that's something that I didn't know that we've implemented is that, could you speak to that for me, please, for clarification for everybody?
When, uh, in, in two thousand and fifteen, when the council adopted the ordinance which allows camps, uh, there were only four operating dispensaries. Two of them, there were six in twenty-ten. The sheriffs did a raid and two of them closed. So there were four when we passed the ordinance. Uh, you grandfathered those four in uh, because they were pre-existing, uh, uses. And there was no provision for adding anymore. In May of twenty, uh, the council amended the ordinance to allow additional dispensments. So that's the section of the ordinance, so the municipal code that they're applying for now.
So it wasn't in the vote in November for the ten percent, it was the ordinance that we adjusted?
Yeah.
Okay.
And
Go ahead.
So the four that were grandfathered in, and then how many are there above and beyond that? Are there more than five?
There are, I believe, seven operating. Six, six, two, six operating. And then there's a, a couple that have been, or there's one that's under construction. Uh, there is another one that's been approved.
Okay.
So
Okay.
There could at this point be a so
One more thing, sorry. So I'm under the impression, this is what I've been under the impression for most of this time, that you know, we, we, um, uh, under our current law and how we have it all set up, we allow these until the general plan is changed. Is that correct?
Correct. Well, you could, Mr. Mayor. The city has the authority to set a cap. If they show, if they so chose. Um, until then, people have the right to develop their property and apply for what the, what the zoning allows them to do.
Yes.
But yeah, you could, uh, through the general plan update limit where they go geographically. Right now they're allowed in any general commercial zone. Subject to conditional use permit, which you have to find that it's compatible, that it's not going to create a problem. And it's a question.
Yes, it does. And I just want to make a comment. I, I personally, I mean, I, I don't love the location, but I'm also for business and I think they'll make it look nice. And I'm I, you know, so I'm, I'm definitely for this because I do like the fact that they're going to make it look nice, as long as we haven't had any pushback by the people from across the street. I, I think it's, seems to be a good plan.
Hey, any further discussion by the council? We'll look for a motion.
I will make a motion to approve.
Alan made the motion. You need a second?
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
This requires four votes.
Yep.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Evans?
No.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Motion failed.
Failed. Okay. We want the number four.
While we're waiting, your honor, I, I thought I might just explain, you know, we've had a number of people that have stepped out of the meeting for conflict purposes and some of those have been as a result of being in close proximity to the item that's on the agenda. And so about a year or so ago, the FPPC came up with new rules that are easier to interpret than the old rules and, and basically if you own a property, not rent, there's different rules for renting, but if you own a property that's within five hundred feet of the project, then it's presumed that you have a conflict and have to recuse yourself under the rules, unless you have clear and convincing evidence that you don't. Between five hundred and a thousand feet, um, you have to look at, uh, several factors such as whether it would alter traffic levels, intensity of use, parking view, privacy, noise levels or air quality. Those are the things you look at. And then over a thousand feet, it's presumed not to be a conflict unless there's clear and convincing evidence that it would have an impact on the property or the financial interest. So I just wanted folks to know, since we've got perhaps some people that are here for the first time, why we have council members stepping in and out.
Thank you. All right, number four. Public hearing notes to consider all evidence and testimony for or against an amendment to conditional use permit amending resolution number two thousand and seventeen dash thirty-four, adding a twenty-four thousand two hundred and forty-two square foot third cannabis cultivation building located at twenty-seven oh one Columbus Drive in the C two general commercial zone, APN zero six six zero zero eight one dash thirty. Advocate is Dean Jesse Brown, staff report.
Honorable men, council members in front of you, as we, mayor previously stated, two thousand and twenty-one dash fifty-two, twenty-seven oh one Columbus Drive, city September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. So the area is located on the west side of town next to the I forty interchange on the West Broadway exit. Here's the vicinity map. As you can see, uh, to the west are two existing commercial cannabis buildings. To the north are boat storage and also an existing cannabis campus. To the west is a motel, uh, Rio, uh, it's a Rio del Sol. And then also to the northwest, uh, or northeast, you'll see a resident or retail restaurant type of businesses. So as you can see, it's in, surrounded by a commercial area. So here's the existing site, the, uh, the applicant submitted, uh, CUP previously for two different buildings at the site. You can see them to the west of the current parcel, the part, the parcels outline, outline, and outlined in green. It's an existing or previously a Taco Bell. And so here's some background, the applicant has applied for a conditional use permit for the twenty-four hundred square foot, uh, forty-two square foot third building at the site. City has already approved two cultivation buildings, uh, adjacent to the project site. The project involves demolition and removal of a twenty-eight hundred square foot building formerly a Taco Bell that was entitled for cannabis manufacturing. The proposed project is situated at the end of the day on two point one seven acre parcel and is located within the general commercial zone, which permits this kind of use. The project will employ ten staff, uh, it will be operating twenty-four hours a day, seven days per week. Adequate parking is located at the site with twenty-five parking spaces. Here's the current site plan. As you can see, the existing buildings are on the west of the parcel, you use the north arrow there. And then the Taco Bell is there to the east. And so they're going to be building a twenty-four thousand square foot building exactly where the Taco Bell is currently located. Here's the site as is the existing conditions facing north, you can see the existing, uh, two buildings that are there, uh, facing northeast, you can see that the taco building that is proposed to be demolished. Facing west is the Taco Bell building and then facing south is the, uh, it's Carl's Junior, which is a restaurant there in the area, a quick serve restaurant. And so here's the floor plan, it's And so here's the floor plan, it's two stories, the first floor consists of cultivation rooms, storage, irrigation rooms, uh, dry rooms and an office and, uh, things of that nature. On the top floor, you're gonna see, uh, more cultivation rooms, uh, four to be exact. Here's the elevations, as you can see, uh, facing, uh, the front, which is the north, you're gonna be seeing a, um, as you see today is the up, you've got the, uh, added architectural enhancement. It adds a border or rim to the top, and then from the north, it's just gonna be the back of the building. Uh, what was added at the planning commission meeting, a condition for this, uh, on the left-hand side there, uh, you're gonna see a twenty-four metal, uh, twenty-four inch metal cornice colored light stone. Um, green span, so that's been requested to be added, uh, it's on the west elevation currently, and so it's been proposed to be added on the east top elevation, so that was something that was added at the planning commission meeting. And so here's their landscape plan, it was just a, here's an overview of it. And so you can see that facing along Columbus, there's landscaping, and we're gonna zoom in on it right now, just so you can see. So we're enlarging the landscape plan, just so you can see what's going on, so. Various types of plants will be added to that whole area along Columbus. Here's what the proposed site is supposed to look like. At the end of the day, obviously, the condition for the planning commission uh, on the east side will be added, the cornice will be added, so it's a proper representation, but it's pretty much close enough. So added conditions that were already on the resolution before it went to the planning commission. So canopy of building, um, is limited to twenty thousand, uh, square feet per state law. So there's gonna be a canopy limitation between three different buildings. Uh, building one is forty-eight hundred square feet of cannabis, or, uh, canopy. Building two is nine thousand square feet, building three is eighty-one hundred square feet, approximately. Prior to issuance of the C O, landscaping will be installed per the approved landscape plan. The rider and fencing along the borders that are visible from the street and chain link fence along the borders that cannot be seen from the street prior to C O will be installed. All building structures, walls shall incorporate a twenty-five percent architectural enhancement. If you were to go up Columbus or along, um, Needles Highway, you'd be able to see the, the architectural enhancement that's existing today. So there'll be six in the near that as well. All building structures shall incorporate that enhancement, so you're gonna see that across the board, that two already do. Prior to the building permit, applicant shall submit a, uh, street improvements plan showing the installation of sidewalk, curb, gutter, and driveways shall, uh, have access to per city standards. So again, you're gonna see the beautification of the street there. Um, so just like every conditional use permit, we got the seven findings that need to be found in order to, um, approve a project. So one is that it's within the jurisdiction, two, it's a complete application, three, it's in conformity with the Needles general plan, so the proposed project is consistent because it's in, within the proper commercial highway designation, which allows these type of projects to occur, thereby providing consistency with the general plan. The project site is located in a developed area. It is currently on a point seven-three parcel that will be involved in the demolition removal of the building that's currently existing, the Taco Bell, and will build a twenty-four thousand square foot, um, foot tall building. Very little traffic is expected at the site. The project site is formally issued to conditional use, uh, well, this site specifically, you got a manufacturing and there's adjacent two buildings with cultivation existing, therefore this project is consistent with the uses in the vicinity. Uh, the, the project does not endanger the public health or safety, so the project's located commercially developed area, as stated, to ensure um, the proper securities occurring, we're adding the systems ventilation and health and safety proposes to the, purposes to the site. So five, number six, it does not injure the value of the joint properties. Are you previously stated, it has a proper zoning, it's being conditioned to install landscaping, so you're actually adding value to the area. So at the planning commission, comments included the state's limitation of the size of the canopy based on the type of licenses received for this facility. So it is limit, there is a condition limiting the canopy size. Uh, and there was also a condition added for the twenty-four inch cornice to be added to the east elevation. Uh, no public testimony was taken, um, September first, twenty twenty-one was the planning commission meeting, and it was recommended for approval. So our resolution, uh, recommendation for resolution twenty twenty-one fifty-two amending the existing resolution of two, uh, two thousand seventeen dash thirty-four, adding the twenty-four thousand square foot building for this, uh, tw- twenty-seven oh one Columbus Drive address in the C two general commercial zone. Also known as APN zero six six zero zero eight one dash three zero 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 zero. That concludes my presentation. The representatives here in the crowd also, um, do you have any questions?
Great. So the council, any questions of staff? Nope, all right, we'll open up for public hearing. Take public comment, is there any public comment on this issue? Seeing, then we'll bring it back to the council, we'll close the public hearing for council to
The smells on this one, I know it's for every time we go drive over, it's, I mean, I guess I should bring that for all of them, but like, the smell, just make sure that they're paying attention to their ventilation, it's like every morning.
Absolutely.
Onto that freeway, smell it over there.
And if you have any complaints, please don't be afraid to reach out to our code, code enforcement officer, they automatically respond.
So it'll be daily.
What's that?
Be every day.
Yes, yeah, no, and we have, um, we do cite individuals that do break the odor ordinance. Um, so it's important that they do follow our code, and we're very responsive.
Okay.
Ed?
Yeah.
Most Zach, you have a comment?
I, I actually got a couple real quick, uh, um, it says he's gonna put in sidewalks. Does that street even have sidewalks? Does, is a sidewalk necessary in front of a grow? We, we don't let people walk on in the place, you know what I mean?
Sidewalk.
I, I think it ends, I think the sidewalk ends at the end of Carl's June, or Junior, right up to Taco Bell, and then it stopped. I, now, I, I'm just curious, I, I, I love sidewalks, don't, don't get me wrong. I, are we asking for something that doesn't need to be there? Like, could he put his fence up against the curb and be done with it?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the city has a general requirement that all developments.
Okay, cool, that's just a question, thank you.
Thank you, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Thank you. Six eyes, councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the next items, we're gonna recess the city council meeting and convene a joint council M P A meeting. Public comments pertaining to the council M P A items, a three-minute time limit per person has been established. Uh, this is the M P A council consent count, all matters listed on consent count are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion to form listed, the mayor, any members. M P A city council may pull an item from a consent calendar for discussion, prior to M P A council action, a member of the party may address the M P A council. A matter scheduled on the consent calendar, a three-minute timer per person applies, recommended actions approved, items ten through fourteen on the consent counter by affirmative vote called vote. Pink? Okay, I'll wait for you.
Oh no, that's the next one.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the consent calendar, ten through fourteen.
I'll move to approve ten through fourteen.
I'll second it.
Ellen second, uh, made the motion, call for the vote? Yeah.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, our fifteenth, the M P A council's action approved a five percent cost of living increase to electric rates as of October first, twenty twenty-one, approved. And over hydro rate of point one two eight five effective October one, twenty twenty-one. And approved methodology to calculate annual electric base rate and the power cost adjustment rate based on the rate calculation spreadsheets. Let's have a staff report.
Let's have a staff report.
I'm ready.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor, um, members of the council. Um, here in front of you is our annual cost of living, um, which we call a COLA adjustment for the electric rates is what we're gonna start with. Uh, the Board of Public Utilities has a statement of policy to set rates that should reflect within reason the cost to maintain and operate the utility. Uh, each utility should be self-sustaining and operate individually and wholly separately. Uh, the statement of policy states that the power rates are designed to provide O and M, capital improvement, prudent reserve. Um, the rates are calculated using two components. We first look at a power cost component and a non-power cost of component. The statement of policy calculates a CPI adjustment that is based on the U S Bureau of Labor Statistics West. Which is right here in front of you. Um, this chart shows, um, cost of living and inflation rates for our certain region based on the utilities that we're providing. Um, as you can see, for June, the CP, the coal, or the CPI was six point zero percent. Which is the highest it has ever been since dating back to two thousand eleven. Last year, the COLA adjustment was point oh eight. I pulled the reports for July and it came in at seven point five. So we're seeing a huge impact, um, on our inflation rates for a number of things. That could be, uh, materials, labor, steel, all those are factored in to this, this, uh, this, uh, calculation here. Um, I now want to turn our focus on to the component of our power purchase cost. This chart in front of you shows what our power purchases cost had, were proposed for July, August, and September of two thousand twenty-one. As you can see, we normally were buying per megawatt around sixty dollars a megawatt. For July and August, we saw rates above two hundred and eighty dollars a megawatt. So to buy the, excuse me, I'll go back to off-peak. Uh, again, we're seeing the same adjustment, we were buying around thirty, we now saw a jump to above eighty. To buy July and August term purchases, which is the power that we need to meet our demand. Uh, we do include a little bit of spot market in there, spot means, uh, we account for weather changes and will take some risks buying time, buying power at real time. To buy July and August, it costs the utilities two point seven million dollars. This chart right here shows, going back to oh seven, we have data on our monthly purchases by month. You'll see back in oh seven, uh, there was a consultant that was used that the utility used for power purchasing, it was around eight hundred thousand dollars a month. We've maintained somewhat of a normal curve, until you see I had it July in here, which is pulling up to one point three million, just for July itself. This chart shows a really good, eh, picture of what we consumed with, versus what we purchased. So normally you want those trend lines to be very tight, meaning you don't want to overbuy your load or underbuy because you can end up buying the spot market. So I added July in here, which is the farthest bar to the right, which shows that we had a two percent margin based on what we bought and what we consumed. So that is a very tight load that we bought. We then wanted to show you what we're looking at going forward, because unfortunately, it's not getting any better. Uh, part of the issue is that our over hydro load is composed mostly of natural gas. Which right now is ranging anywhere from eleven to twelve cents per kilowatt. And that is due to a lot of nuclear plants have been closed. Um, demand is up, so it increases prices. This chart shows you the on-peak for quarter four of two thousand twenty-two, which is our peak season of July, August, and September. Again, we're seeing prices in the still, in the mid two hundred dollars per megawatt. These trend charts are not showing this, uh, price to decline. So going forward, we are expecting these costs to be high. This is off-peak, again, we're showing the same trend chart. We wanted to provide you an historical kind of overview or snapshot of our historical over hydro rates. Uh, back in oh seven, when we were around eight hundred thousand dollars megawatts, we were seeing about fifteen cents a kilowatt. We've kind of fluctuate up and down, um, based on our over hydro rate and if we're returning rates back to the customer. The direction and goal from the utility board is to try to maintain a more flat-lined, um, over hydro rate. So what I, what that means is usually in the winter months, when we've over-collected, we reduce rates two or three times. However, we're now seeing a huge, um, cry from the community to be able to maybe flat-line that hold on to those rates, and then we can help offset, um, higher costs in the summer months. So that's a new strategy that we're gonna kind of take on to where we can hopefully lessen the burden when customers really need it the most, which is in the peak season, and not so much in the winter. The five percent COLA adjustment on here is right there for you, Dick, can you hide that screen? Because I can't see, what is this? Yeah. Can't mind say. Oh no, he messed me up, he went forward. Okay, so, sorry about that. The proposed rates are up top, showing we are applying the five percent to the basic service charge, increasing it from thirty dollars and sixty cents to thirty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. The over hydro rate currently is point one two seven nine. The, uh, model is showing that we need to go to point one two eight five to cover our electric costs. The net effect of this is an increase of two dollars and seventy-eight cents. We used a standard single-family in a fifteen hundred square foot home to get the consumption.
Two dollars seventy-eight cents a month.
Correct. We then wanted to take this a step further and compare where we stand in terms of our neighboring, uh, co-op, which is Mojave Electric. And so we took, again, a fifteen hundred square foot home, same kilowatt consumption, and did the calculations versus our rates and their rates. They again have a tier rating, uh, structure, but the difference is, um, nine dollars and sixty cents. Meaning we are charging nine dollars and sixty cents less per the standard typical family home. With that being said, I'd like to close it and answer any questions or concerns that you guys have regarding the five percent COLA adjustment increase for the electric rates. We also have the, some members of the utility board that are here that can answer any questions, uh, for you.
Okay, um, council, have any questions for staff?
Um, no, not right now, I don't know.
No? Okay.
I think it's pretty clear.
Is there any public comment on this issue? Robert, if you can just stand up for a few minutes, you'll forget. Come on.
Gotcha. Um, most of this stuff's over in my head, but not quite all of it. Uh, and I wasn't prepared to go into any detailed questions, but, um, something that Mr. Daniels said at one of the prior meetings involved the amount of power we're buying. Does the price, my question is, uh, does the price go up as we buy more power? Normally, you would think it would go down, but not these days, there's no telling. So I have a question, does the price go up because we're buying more? And tagged on to that, of course, is the businesses that are causing us to buy more are the cannabis businesses. So are we paying, if in, indeed, we're paying more because we're buying more, is that supposed to be on the cannabis businesses, or are we sharing their increase, our increased utility bills with cannabis businesses? Do that, if you understand the question?
You notice who will make Rick nervous when you say Rick said.
I remember.
Yeah, go ahead, Rick.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, in response, the, um, we buy, uh, WAPA has a two-tiered rate. Um, high growth, which is about a penny and a half kilowatt, when it's available. And what's the ongoing rate now for over hydro? You said twelve?
One point two eight nine five.
Right now, it's twelve, that used to be five point five, just, uh, you know, not that long ago, meaning you're within the last year. So we've seen that over hydro rate go up. They just, they, WAPA charges us the same rate regardless of all.
Okay.
So whether the city uses 90 million.
Megawatts.
Whatever you figure.
Drops.
Or 10. It's the same rate.
Do you recall what you said when, about the volume, what that was about when you said that?
Yeah.
What was it?
It is, it is the volume.
Sound like you're trained by an attorney how to answer questions.
Yeah.
The rate is not tied to volume with one exception. That is our power in the past, in 2013, 58% of our power came from hydro, which was the cheap, cheap rate that no other utility unless public utilities have access to. For example, Edison can't access that power. So we were getting about 58% of our power from hydro. And the balance, 42, was coming from the higher cost overhydro, but it was at five and a half cents. Our hydro allocation is fixed, meaning we can't buy anymore hydropower, the cheap hydropower. Therefore, the increase in volume that we have to buy because of new development is we're having to buy out of that more expensive overhydro rate. And right now, we're about 40, 42% hydro and 58%. So the numbers have switched. So our, we're paying more per, we're paying more, but it's also the overhydro is running away because of the expectation that has been created in this renewed deal that carbon sources of power generation will not be available. So.
So I have my ideas on how to solve that problem, but I won't say it here.
Thank you.
So I have one question that's come up a couple of times, which I'm going to bring up now. One of the things I do is bankruptcies, okay? There are charts we use when we do bankruptcies. One of them is the same chart that was up there that had the little point oh, or the 5%, 6%. Was that, what? It's not the Department of Justice. It's the Department of Labor and what, 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 what division of the federal government did you use on that chart, Rainey?
We used the West slash DC.
Oh, that didn't. Department of Labor Statistics, okay. Okay, so now you've got 6% circled and we're increasing at 5%. Are you going by the COLA of 5%, 5%? Okay, so that's good for starters. Have you ever seen on their website, has any, I don't know who I'm supposed to direct this question to. I'm wondering, has the city ever seen on their website that they are not, we are not to use the cost of living COLA based on these numbers to increase utility rates? Anybody ever seen that? And for other purposes, not just utilities, okay? Now, it's been a few years since I've looked at that, but the federal government specifically said not to use their COLA rates. Now, also these numbers that are on the, the charts, 2021, for instance, 6%. There are also footnotes that go with those charts that specifically state that they are major Los Angeles area. And if you're not in Los Angeles, deduct, okay? And you start backing out on your numbers. I don't know if we also take that into consideration or how you handle those numbers, but I just thought I'd mention it because I can never get a response.
Thank you.
Finally, Mr. Mayor. We use this index because this is what in the, in the notices we gave to the public about the rates, we notified them that we would use this index. So we empowered ourselves to do so.
There you go.
The, this is a.
Oh, Biden does it.
This is a construction index, and although we are not in LA, much of the products that we buy come through LA.
But not our power.
No, but steel.
That comes from China. No, I'm kidding.
But it comes through the port, so.
Comes from Pennsylvania, I hope.
So there, a lot of the commodities come through LA, so that's why that's the most relevant. And we notified publicly would be.
And same, that cuts deep. All right.
Oh, the Biden thing?
Yeah, that cuts deep, right.
Take every opportunity to make it very clear. Thank you very much for all your time.
Thank you.
Your Honor, can I ask a question?
Hang on one second. We're still doing public input.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Terry Campbell, 4469 Bourbon Street, Chairman of the Utility Board. Maybe I can kind of wrap this up for Barbara. Our rate policy was established in 2007. It has two tiers. Tier one is a lifeline rate and it is linked to the cost of hydropower plus the fully loaded cost of earning the utility, which is labor, maintenance, overhead, debt service. And then the cost of energy in hydro, which is like been around 1.2, 1.3 cents a kilowatt hour. Our hydro comes from the Colorado River Project on a long-term 18-year contract. Renewable 18 years. The only side note I'd make to that is you need to be aware of the other side of the river, Mojave Electric Cooperative. They've been trying to get our, hold of our contract for hydropower for years. They don't have our best interest at heart. The second tier is purchased energy, brown power, what we got to pay for nuclear, coal, natural gas. And that fluctuates, but been pretty steady. And you've seen where, when I first got put on the utility board, the price per kilowatt hour per household, because we didn't have the rate policy that we have now, was 15 cents. I can remember a councilman back then screaming bloody murder about his electric bill being 600 bucks. Somebody suggested he might turn down the, turn up the thermostat on his house. That might help cut the cost, but. So tier two is strictly on energy. Now, tier two is growing because of the marijuana businesses, right? We're selling more, so there's more tier two. And as we sell more tier two, the same effect happens to hydro is each, how, the electric meter gets less hydro allotment because you're taking total hydropower divided by the number of electric meters. So every customer gets that amount of hydro. The other problem we got is we got a drought and they're cutting hydro back 13% and they've already reached out to Rainey and Rainey's informal utility board that they want to renegotiate that 18-year contract. So less hydropower, because they have to make, on the current contract, they have to make up the difference with brown power, which is costing them a ton of money. So our rates on the electric side basically are based on what it cost us to buy those two power sources plus debt service, operating and maintenance. And you might consider, some of you guys don't get cost of living raises because you don't probably have a strong union, but some of you have a strong union and you get CPI. Our employees get a CPI rate raised this year. And it's, I think, 2% or 3% is what I was told. And that, but it can be higher because there's a cap, a minimum and a cap. So those are the kinds of things. And your electric utility was healthy enough to survive that 2.7 hit, but we had to raise rates immediately to recover that purchase account. We have a purchase account where we track what our power purchases are and we try to keep a balance in that. And the, your utility board had the forethought back in February when we saw who was being sworn in as President of the United States, that we better not keep it at $200,000. We better raise it to $750,000. And lucky we did.
Thank you, Derek. Is there any other public comment on this issue? Oh, Mr. Mike.
Mike Schneider, 2009 Carriway, utility board member. I'd like to comment on the, I, I had the same question posed to me by several different citizens in town. The electric rate, even though we've brought onboard all those cannabis growhouses and our, our electrical load has grown quite a bit, it does not affect the price per kilowatt. Yeah, we're spending millions of dollars right now because of the cost for the power, but it doesn't affect any more or any less what all the ratepayers pay price per kilowatt. It's gone up because wholesale prices have gone, but not just because of cannabis businesses. So we're, like Terry mentioned, we're, we're a one-rate plan, basically, well, two rates, the hydro and overhydro. But just to be clear, that the cannabis businesses have not affected what we're paying price per kilowatt. So just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. All right, senior opponents, we'll bring it back to counsel for discussion deliberation.
Two couple of questions.
Go ahead, Tana.
How come, were we ever told that marijuana would cause the price of electric to go down? That's what I hear.
On me.
Wanted to.
Steve. Steve Moffett, 312 Parkway, a member of the board. What has happened is that part of our cost, the O and M cost, is divided up into every kilowatt. So the more kilowatts you use, the more the O and M costs are provided by the marijuana. It's, it's when they get bigger and bigger, less of that cost will go to you. That will be where it helps us.
Yes.
So it does help already now?
It's, we're just kind of getting started. We're, we're gone from like 12 to 18, but we're going to double that. So it will really start distributing that cost out and they'll pay it rather than you.
Any further, Ellen, did you have a question?
Yeah, yes. I have to make a statement and I had a question for Rainey. I just, I, that was just, one of my statements was just covered, that the marijuana business does not cause this. And we buy what we need and the cost is the cost. So if it's this much per kilowatt or this much per megawatt, that's what the cost is, whether we have one house or we're running Los Angeles. It's, that's the cost and we're going to pay for what we need. We are not a electric company, and I think a lot of people don't understand, we're not an electric company that makes money on itself. We don't, we don't have a bank of stored money and we don't have a bank of stored electricity. I think it needles that we have gotten very comfortable. I am one of them. I have a 4,000-square-foot house, two air conditioners and a swimming pool and nine children at best. So the electric, and I have an office, so I pay two bills. And depending on what I want to put my thermostat on, depends on how much money I'm going to spend on my electric bill every month, and that's my office and my house. I just gave up my second house in Rialto because the electricity is 43 cents a kilowatt. Once you reach a certain level, and it doesn't take much to get there, and then it's 43 cents a kilowatt. So I, I don't think any of you want to see that on your bill. It was horrifying. But I would like Rainey to explain to the council what happens to our city if we do not approve this. What is the ramification if we do not approve it? There's consequences.
That's a great question. So you'll see in your attachments, the model projects an increase in revenue and expenditures equally because we have to break even, going from 6.9 million up to 9.4. So the ramifications would be that you wouldn't have enough money to buy your term purchases, which there's pros and cons to that. Your term purchase, you're locking that in. Spot market is time of day, real time. It can change every second, minute, hour. So you take a gamble where you're not going to lock in a term. So I'm trying to explain this. We, for instance, we locked in, I'm just throwing out numbers, 10 megawatts of a term purchase. If we didn't have that 10 megawatts, you take that 10 megawatts, you'd be all on spot. It could not be 265. It could be 565. You don't know what someone's going to offer you at that time when you need it in real time. So there could be ramifications in us not having term purchases to cover what our loads would be.
And what happens to our budget?
Then you're not, you're not maintaining the financial duties of the utilities.
And that's power poles and maintenance and having supplies on hand?
That's correct.
Go ahead, Rick.
Could I add to that? The city, when it sold, created and sold the utility to the city or to the MPWA, took on, the MPWA took on debt, which we have refinanced a couple of times to go to lower rates. And it saved us last time $4.7 million. We have an obligation to those bondholders that bought our $15 million of debt that if we don't charge sufficient rates to cover the cost, then we're looking at, at not being able to meet our financial obligations and they could take cause against us for not keeping the utility funded to assure that over the 20-year period, they get their money back that they gave us 1997 initially. So as opposed to a lot of things, we have fiduciary responsibilities to make sure that the rates cover. They're not in excess because we can't, as public to do, we can't make a profit. But we have to cover the cost of operations to cover the debt, the operations, the maintenance, the capital improvements, and a prudent reserve. Now, we have over the years, even though we reduced the power rates by about $40 a month in 2016 and another $17 a month in 2019, we are not funding the capital improvements sufficient to meet all of our needs, but we're within striking range. So it's within a reasonable amount that we can get back as opposed to water and sewer. We're, we're off conservative. So you are the board of directors of a utility company. So you, you have to charge what it costs operating the utility. And it's not like we are exorbitant in our spending. We are a very judicious organization, but.
Your Honor, can I add to what the city manager just said? I agreed, I agree with what he said. I would add that we actually made covenants to, when we did the private placement and you refinance the, the bonds, you made a covenant or a promise to the people loaning that money to the city at a lower interest rate that you would set the rates high enough to operate the utility. And, you know, the number one objective of you as a board or as an MPWA board and, and also the utility board is to make sure that the utility is sustainable. If you fail to do that and you end up in a situation where the utility becomes insolvent, has a detrimental impact on your community. And, you know, for those agencies that have taken or gone through the bankruptcy process, Chapter Nine is a very specialized field. There's only a handful of lawyers in the United States that do it. Costs millions of dollars in legal fees to go through a Chapter Nine. You don't end up wiping away the debt. You end up having to repay it under a reorganization plan on top of the legal fees and, and it can be pretty detrimental for decades for a public agency that goes through it. There's a stigma attached to it. So whatever you need to do to avoid getting into kind of a spiral with your utility and to maintain its stability is, you know, good governance. So.
Right. Also, if I read that for the utility and it being sued, and you just heard the rates that Edison is, uh, is charging 43 cents a kilowatt, it's a hell of a lot more than we're paying now. Another thing is if both items, 15 and 16 are approved, it, as a mini hospital, 1500 square feet, it only raises your bill $9.21. And if there's anybody out there that needs the assistance, the county heat program can help you and can assist.
Adding in water and wastewater, what's your next item?
Yeah. So the county heat program can help you if you, if you need the help for your bill. So did you have something to say?
I, I do. Um, we, we, uh, we, we covered a COLA not too long ago. Former councillor Goodmanson spearheaded that. Cost us what, $200,000? So if, if we were just to cover both of these COLA increases, what would that cost? It's half a million dollars. Half a, half a million dollars for, for a couple of dollars a month. And, and believe me, I, I hate tax increases. But I also live in a 100-year-old house. The first increase that we took for electricity, my bill went up $100. So I, I tweaked a couple of water leaks, adjusted all my air conditioners. And the last bill I got was $100 less with an increase than the last one. So I actually, out of the two increases, except for the first one, I, about $20 up for the month. But my family sweated a little bit. Um, I don't like this, but we can't keep shoving them off. Um, does the COLA have to be 5%? Is, is that the number that's making it generate to where it's feasible? Is, is that where we're at?
Should be six, sorry. Yeah. So the COLA should technically be sixed. We have a cap of five. The thing you got to think of with electric is your power purchasing budget went from 2.5 million to 4.7.
I understand.
So we have to increase rates to generate enough that much revenue.
Go buy a steak, go buy a steak in Safeway right now.
So we spent.
25 bucks.
2.7 for July and August. And we spent another million to get us through December. So we're at, was that 3.4? And we got to get, we have, still have to get through June. So we have January through June.
Our citizens are just looking at us. We just did a rate increase. Now, two of them. They're looking at this as a rate increase, not as a COLA. They're looking at it as a rate increase. And I know everyone sitting at this table right now has had emails, DMs, phone calls. The last two days, I've been blown up. Um, you can ask your electrical department. I pay in full on time, ahead of time, and usually a little more because I don't want to sit in my house with no electric. And, and that's why I pay my stuff on time. Do I like the rate increases? No. Can we keep this up without? No. And we're a public utility. Everyone gets the same rate, whether you're cannabis, whether you're a gas station, whether you're a hotel, you all get the same rate as me. If you don't like it, unfortunately, that's part of being a public utility. We, we, we don't have the option to change it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The, um, I'm sorry, Kirsten, why don't you go ahead?
Oh.
Question?
Yeah, I do. He said the thing about a public utility, can we look at, and I had to run to the restroom, so I might have missed what Mr. Campbell said. Is there a way for us to, going forward, because these rates are going to get unsustainable if they're not already for some people? Is there a way going forward to have a tiered system for people who use more? I'm sorry, I did have to run to the restroom while he was talking.
Please, it's the, it's the mayor.
We have a tiered system.
Yes.
Lifeline, hydro.
Yes, I agree.
Just energy.
They mean the ratepayers, sir.
I mean a rate.
Well, the, the coast has a tiered system, right? PG&E, San Diego Gas Electric, Edison, who's our closest competitor. And you heard what Ellen Campbell, councillor Campbell said, uh, 45 cents was the top tier.
Yeah.
The, uh, I talked to a gentleman that I know in Fortin Hills. Big home, you know, Fortins Hills, there's stockbrokers and lawyers and all that stuff living up there. And they get to open their windows at night. Ocean breeze comes in. He paid $1,025 on a five-tiered system. And I had to laugh and says, gee, I only paid 525. You know, and I get, open my windows at night. So that's what people need, you need to go out to the community and explain to them. It isn't, the grass isn't any greener anywhere else. We've got the lowest rates in California here, except for one town. There's only one town in California that has cheaper rates than us. Whiskey Town. It's on a river in Northern California and it's all hydro. So pray for rain, get more hydro.
Mr. Mayor.
Rick.
Yeah. What I was going to say, and thank you for turning the memory, is about six to eight weeks ago, the utility board asked us, directed staff to work with our rate consultant to see if there are any opportunities to have a tiered rate for customers that create additional cost to, to the, to the utility. For example, Park Mall lobby is outside the city. They have, what is it, 10 miles of power line down there? That requires additional cost, sir. We may be able to deal with out-of-city connections at a higher rate because they cost the utility, you know, higher costs that, that aren't normally shared by everybody else. So Rainey is working with our rate consultant to see if there are any other opportunities that we have that a, a customer class is causing increased cost and we can tag them for those additional costs. So that rate study is underway now. The other thing is, right now, our, our meters aren't capable of reading like time of day, if you, if you went to a time of day, because time of day is twice the power rate as at night. But our meters aren't capable of, the ones that are in the ground or on the wall today. But the new meters that you all approved and will be installed will have that capability. Second of all, we'll have to upgrade our, which we need to do anyway, on our finance system. So when they tell the finance system what to bill people, the finance system can incorporate those different rates. I don't know whether a tiered rate system is going to be better or worse, but we're going to look at it and eventually utility board and you as the NPWA board will make a decision about those demand meters. But some cities have, or some utilities have four or five tiers. We have two. But there may be others that we can isolate that are creating an unnecessary demand that's causing us spending money.
Mike, do you have something to add to that?
Just one thing real quick, just to make the distinction, the COLA is only applied to the basic service charge for both electric and water. So if we're at $30.60, the 5% added a dollar 79 to the bill. The other usage on water and electric, it's your usage that is the bulk of the bill. And that's strictly what you see in that chart with the price per megawatt going up to 230 bucks megawatt. And the same thing with water, you know, the basic service charge is going to go up 5%, but it's your usage that also impacts that bill. That, after I explained that to some the people that are asking me questions, that distinction on the cost of living, they just thought 5% was across the board. No, we don't arbitrarily just add 5% to our electric rates. That's, that is based on our purchase price.
Thanks, Wade.
Um, thank you for that, Mike. That, that actually is really good information. So now I want to ask, uh, right here, it says we're going to prove an overhydro rate of 12.85 cents effective October 1st. Now, isn't it at 12.79 cents right now? Well, that's not service charge there. That's, that's the rate per kilowatt hour.
That's your overhydro rate. So yes, it's going up 0.006 cents per kilowatt. Yeah.
But Mike just said that the 5% is only the service charge.
That is correct. So you see the motion is the 5% on the electric rate and then it's a comma and an overhydro rate. Yes, they're separate.
I got it. Um, one more question, wire up, you're ready?
Yeah.
Um, if you don't mind, Mayor.
Good.
You said, uh, we paid 2.7 million for July and August, right, with our power purchases?
That's correct.
Do you usually purchase power in three months? Correct. But then you said you, we put another million to get to December. I'm guessing you pay, you get the best rate you can.
We do. So usually, well, normally I like to buy in terms, which is three quarters, which is the three-month period. However, when you see prices that aren't favorable, sometimes you'll pull a month out and say, well, I'm going to watch that month. Or if we see longer, we'll buy six, nine, 12 months, what we'd like to.
To go to December.
Yeah, I bought us, I bought us two, two term purchase. I bought six months.
July and, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm guessing July and August, you were trying to, you wait, wait, waiting, that's why you didn't go to three months?
That's correct.
Okay.
So there was forecast that the trends were going to go down. But then in the middle, if you look at our timeline, I went power purchasing. That's when the, the coal or the nuclear gas pipes were all shut down.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Great questions, by the way.
Your Honor.
Just with the, uh, purchase and the cost and the use, she's done a great job. Staff's done a great job at, at matching that. That was a lot better than my consultant had. She's doing, they're doing a lot better. The utility land staff are doing a great job at matching that. Ellen, did you have something?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to point out that what Rainey does is like playing the stock market. It's numbers and it's watching. And I, I am so grateful for the work that she has done for us. I, I can't even imagine what she's been through. And I just want to thank her very, very much.
And, right. All right. I'm sorry. Thanks, Derek.
In the news today, natural gas prices exceeded $5 a million BTUs. We normally pay three, in the three, low $3 range for natural gas. So those plants that generate when natural gas are all looking at a big increase in fuel. The other, the other interesting news for me, because I used to operate a coastal power plant and they got mad at us because we put hot water in the ocean. Shut them down. They're, they're looking, the governor, I guess he wants to get reelected or not get impeached, but has asked it for a 90-day waiver from Air Quality Management District and the federal government on air quality issues so they can fire those plants back up.
Trying to save his job, isn't he? All right. Any further discussion with the council? We'll take a motion.
I would make a motion to approve.
Any motion from Ellen?
I'll second it. And just thank all the utility board members for coming in and talking. Really appreciate you guys coming in, Rainey.
We put both them together, just this.
Just the first one. 15.
No chance we can split that up on the the rate per kilowatt hour and the COLA for the, uh, service charge?
Well, we've got a motion to second right now. So if that fails, you, you'll go back and make a motion, but not right now. Call for the vote.
006 is what you were talking about. Mayor Williams.
Oh, I'm abstaining.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
No.
Merritt.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Pageant.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that passed. Number 16 to approve a 5% cost of living increase in water wastewater rates as of October 1st, 2021. Staffordport.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Vice member, members of council, I'll be very quick with this one. It's very similar to water or to electric. However, the 5% COLA is only applied to the basic service charge. And I'll get here showing you that. Again, this is just showing you that the COLA came in at 6%. Our policy is set at a cap of five. The proposed wastewater rates on your left include a 5% cost of living adjustment to the EDU rate, which is currently at $45.01. The 5% would up it to 47.26, which is a $2.25 percent or $2.25 cent increase. The water, the per 100 cubic feet is going from 215 to 236. Council adopted a five-year rate schedule for that per 100 cubic feet in November with resolutions 2020, 66 and 2020, 67. So the 5% COLA adjustment is just on the basic sir, or meter charge for a residential. It's going from 4161 to our proposed rate of 4369 for an increase of a monthly bill of $4.18. So with that being said, it's pretty straightforward how we calculate those rates. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Council, any questions on this?
Yeah.
I have a question.
What's that?
What's the average increase per family household bill all put together per month?
Yep. So it'd be the 225, 418 and 268. So.
10 bucks.
10. The 921.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Christian.
On the last, on the last chart, we saw the thing with, that it was 6%. Yes. Is that the same for this?
Yes.
That's, okay, just verifying.
Same.
The same index. That's the word I was coming up, trying to come up with. Okay.
All right. For questions, we'll ask for public input on this item. Senior, we'll bring up to the council for deliberation a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Sorry, you need a motion.
A motion?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
We got a second? Call for a vote? I did. I pushed my button. I'm on it.
It's, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Evans.
No.
Merritt.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Pageant.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we're going to recess the joint meeting of the council, NPWA and reconvening the city council meeting. We'll call it a meeting to order. Public comments pertaining to the council items. There's a three-minute timer per person that's been established. But first of all, we have the consent counter up. All matters listed on consent count are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor and any member of the city council may pull an item from the consent count for discussion. By the council, actually, no, the public may address city council matters scheduled on the consent calendar. Three-minute timer per person applies. Recommended actions, approve items 17 through 22 on the consent count by a fair and real call vote. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to pull number 21 and 22.
Okay, we'll pull 21 and 22. So we'll pass 18, or 17 through 20. Any motion?
I make a motion to pass
I'll second it.
17 through 20?
Yep. Okay, we've got a second. Ms. Campbell, call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Pageant.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, 21's way through reading the adopted resolution number 2021-54, amending resolution number 2021-31, increasing code enforcement overtime budget in the adopted operating budget for fiscal year ending 6/30/2022 by $10,000 to be paid out of general fund reserves. Ms. Merritt?
Um, the city manager to go over this a little bit, just because, just for clarification purposes, I guess.
Right. Mr. Mayor, Councilman Merritt, the last year, code enforcement spent about $10,000 in overtime. And those are like when they fire down your Bravo, it was at Third Street. They had already put in their. Uh, they had already put in their day, we had to bring them back because of code enforcement problems, uh, at the request of the sheriff. Uh, they, they respond to fires, uh, to be able to, uh, work with the investigators. Uh, we also, there's weekend callouts, like people that you saw in the pictures about the, where the billboard's going to go, you know, illegal vendors down there that don't have a business license or a, uh, seller's permit. But we, we go down and check them if they have them. Great. If they don't, they have to vacate. So this year, uh, the budget committee reviewed and we had ten thousand dollars in there, uh, for overtime. Just we figured we wouldn't spend more than last year. But what happened is in the final draft, the budget that got adopted by the council, those numbers fell out. So the overtime and code enforcement is zero. And, uh, we, uh, we need to add that ten thousand back in. It was an oversight. Eventually everything's my responsibility. I should have missed, or I shouldn't have missed the fact that it wasn't in there. But it was accounted.
Hey, Zach.
This, this isn't money owed to our code enforcement officer. This is money budgeted for next year, correct?
For this, this fiscal year.
For this year.
For that one.
Okay. We weren't, we don't owe money and.
No, 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 no. We don't owe anybody any money.
Can we get them now working since there's three of them with Adrian, working on the weekends? We've had talked about this before. So that way it's not overtime if somebody's scheduled. You know, one Saturday and then somebody scheduled on a Sunday, especially if they're running just the, um, Jack Smith or just to spread them out because I know we have parks that work on the weekend, things like that.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, we with, by having three code enforcement officers, we can have one working the normal Monday through Friday. We're going to have one working Tuesday through Saturday. So we're not paying overtime for Saturday and we can have another one working Wednesday through Sunday. So you can stagger workdays, uh, as long as we're providing forty hours opportunity. Uh, we've, we've got flexibility. I'd have to work that through the union, but, uh, that's, it's possible.
I mean, it's still, I understand overtime's going to happen. I mean, there's things, these things that we, I mean, we have to prove that's no problem. But I mean, just to kind of try to, especially because I know we're out there really monitoring Jack Smith lately. I mean, I appreciate that, but.
Well, we're, we're going to see, uh, the parking stuff drop off dramatically.
If you don't need it, then I mean, whatever.
Go ahead, Zach.
Kind of how, what, what's the average day of fines at Jack Smith Park? Oh, what are we taking? Just curious and average. Five tickets a day.
I couldn't guess.
And ten tickets a day.
But I will have that number to the council tomorrow morning. Thank you. Because I can see go back and look at the daily loans.
No results yet.
Your, um, yeah.
No results yet. Right.
Um, here it says, uh, code enforcement anticipate parking citation to citations to exceed the budgeted revenue amount to assist in covering the cost. Um, there's no numbers on it. I was just, I was just seeing, I, I was, I was hoping to see, when I read that, I was hoping to see behind it, maybe last year's citation numbers compared to overtime numbers.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying? And I'd like to see that. And I'd like to also ask, um, is it a possibility that maybe through the park and rec that we can hire a part time employee, train them to write citations so they can be down there on the weekends?
Um, yes, but they would need to be certified as a, as civil law for, uh, as a code enforcement officer. Like, what was that?
Well, um. I was creating the position.
Yeah, there did have to be a position created.
But.
Then we have to get them trained.
My only thing is if we have the three, I mean, that's why we approved the three because they keep, we continue to add on their work. So that's would fall within their realm already, right?
Yeah.
They do that anyway.
I'll get you, I'll get you those numbers tomorrow.
I mean.
I think staggering works. I think that's a great idea.
By the way, code enforcement does an excellent job.
Oh, yeah, I get it.
Just so you know that. Excellent job.
You have to take their hours away.
No, no.
Is it?
They have needed function. Because remember when we saw that big jump in boat launches, we had caves.
We just see ten thousand dollars is a nice round number. You know, we, we didn't know it missed budget and, and we had a lot of questions. I, I think a few of us had quite a few questions asked on that. It was a nice round number. Uh, I think you've explained it.
That's, yeah, Zach just touched on that big time. Uh, I, you, you, that was in there last year and you just.
It, it didn't get carried.
Yeah. Okay. All right. That, that is a, yeah.
So it's not an increase, it's a restoration. And it looks.
Any further discussion? Let's have a motion second.
Motion to approve twenty one.
I'll second that. Have a motion, a second call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Pageant.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, number twenty two, wait, the reading adopt resolution number twenty twenty one dash fifty seven, approving amendment to resolution number twenty twenty dash fifty six, adding golf course management and operation services of the golf course maintenance to professional services agreement with Touchstone Golf LLC in the amount not to exceed the current management fee of fifty two thousand dollars per year. Ms. Merritt?
Um, I want to talk about this because I've had a, we, we received, um, a letter from, uh, Mrs. Beard, Ms. Beard, and we also, I've also received, um, I've also had conversations with some other, um, citizens regarding, um, the restrooms at the, um, at the golf course. And I guess I have a big question for staff. Who is in charge of cleaning them? If it's the city, the city needs to maintain them multiple times a day. If it's the golf course or the restaurant, then they should be allowed to be closed off. And this is an ongoing issue. I just stopped down there before the council meeting. I mean, you could tell that somebody had put out soap, but like the, the things are broken off the walls and I don't know, it, it's, it looks bad on all of the businesses. It looks bad on the city because if you think it's the restaurant, then it looks bad on the restaurant if it's, you know, so it just, it looks bad. And also if we do want to close these restrooms off to, you know, to, to just make it so they're just the restaurant or just the golf course or whatever, that's, that's fine. But they should be able to like close it to the public because there is a safe, there's so many safety issues. You don't know who's going to walk in. So I guess that's, you know, I know a lot of people have stuff to say about that, but that's something I wanted to say.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Good, Rick.
The restrooms are, um, should be kept open to the public because they're in a public building. And for example, beachgoers need to be able to use those restrooms or else we're going to have waste products out on the beach and, and parking lot. But there's a shared responsibility. And that is the, the, uh, agreement, the policy I established was, uh, the, uh, the golf pro, the, the golf staff. As soon as they get there in the morning, they check the restrooms, make sure there's paper, uh, soap, uh, that everything's working. And then they should check another two times during the day to make sure that nothing's gone amiss. And then whenever they close, like in the summer, they close one, one thirty because there's nobody out there in the incredibly high temperatures. Uh, then after that, there's a handoff to the restaurant because they're, they continue to operate until between one and two AM whenever they close. So they take the responsibility to make sure that there's paper products, there's soap, there's all those. So there's shared responsibility between the restaurant and the, and the golf shop. Now, if you approve tonight, the assumption by the maintenance staff, that will become, that will be fully, uh, Touchstone's responsibility. Because they will be the contract staff to operate the, the golf course and the Pro Shop.
Yes, and go ahead.
So, okay. So if we do approve this for Touchstone to take over that, that, then they have to stay on top of that at all times, even when they're closed. And it will be in a contract that they are in charge of it because it looks really bad for this restaurant to have people, I mean, and this is on the city, but it looks bad to this restaurant who's paying the city and they have a contract with the city. It looks bad to the golf course. So I mean, if we approve this, we do, and even if we don't approve this, regardless of what happens, there needs to be a contract saying you have to do it or you have to do it. Could this? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to get worked up, but.
I gave, I gave very clear direction about who's responsible during what times. There should be no doubt. Uh, and it was working. Uh, and, and, but there is no excuse ever not to have soap.
It, it just needs, it needs to be in a contract.
The Santa sheets or anything. There's, that's just part of running a business and especially in a public facility.
I just think everything needs to be delineated. And so regardless of what happens tonight, this needs to be in a contract for either Touchstone or the city or so. So one of them.
Wait.
I didn't see a time on the contract anywhere.
Well, our, our normal practice is three years.
That's what, that's what I thought. So is this one three years?
Darnedest question. If not, you can make it. You could.
Can we just add it on to their term of their next lease? I mean, if there are, I mean, if they had, they're, you're three years from the first contract we made already, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're here.
Yeah, um, on the restrooms, I think. And then, uh, there are representatives here, but, uh, there will be a contract and, uh, it will include, you know, three years. But.
I have a question, Your Honor.
Hold on one second, Ellen.
Let me talk just briefly about the contract. Um, once Dennis decided to retire, when he retired, he took with him all the certifications for dealing with pesticides, herbicides, fertilizers and the like. So, uh, Touchstone came to me and remember we selected them to run the Pro Shop, doing our process. They came to me with a proposal, uh, to take over the maintenance. And we negotiated where they would do it at no additional costs to the city. So they're going to run the Pro Shop and no additional costs. And as well, their, the initial proposal was they believe they could save the city seventy thousand dollars. But in further discussions, that dropped to seven because they said they believe that we were inadequately maintaining the golf course and it needed more bodies. It needed more people down there. Now, at one time there were eight or nine people working on golf maintenance. Right now there's six. Over time, it just got cut back. So they believe they can add a couple of people to the maintenance crew and improve the condition of, of the golf course, but it still saves us seven thousand dollars a year. So saves money. Uh, they're bringing expertise we've never had before. I know they're going to be looking at hiring the part timers, uh, on their staff and on the three full time staff. They're going to be transferred to vacant positions in parks maintenance and, uh, public works. So we should see improved maintenance on, in, in those two areas. So, but yeah, I will make sure that finally green, I mean, I should touch them. Will delineate.
Delineates and Touchstone would take care of the restaurants.
Right.
Ellen?
Uh, I have a question about those restrooms. I play golf. I use that restaurant. Um, I go to that beach with my grandchildren and I'm a designated driver. So sometimes I am there really late at night or very early in the morning. And I just have some, I don't know ambiguity about, um, the restaurant is contracted through the city. It's not through the golf course. That restaurant has a contract with us. The golf course has a contract with us and it is the city building, period. So there has to be, I think there has to be some division. I think that there has to be some culpability for the restaurant who is operating until almost two, until two o'clock in the morning and has a restroom available. And when the golf course closes at one thirty or at six o'clock or whatever time they close, um, then maintaining that bathroom from six o'clock at night till two o'clock in the morning, does that need to fall on Touchstone? Are we, is Touchstone agreeing to that? Uh, I just have some questions about that because if they're contracting with us also, then there has to be some responsibility. And if it's not being maintained, then who is not maintaining it?
Well, yeah.
Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, we would, uh, we would look at it, you know, the, the golf course staff maintains it while the golf course is open. Then after that, it falls to the, to the restaurant and they have a health department requirement.
Right.
Right. So we'll, we'll make sure that it's, uh, better standard.
Okay, I just don't, I just didn't want it to fall all on Touchstone, that they have to maintain the bathroom at midnight when someone throws up.
At least when they're open.
That's, okay, thank you.
I just want to say one more thing.
Kristen?
Yeah, that's all I'm asking is that it's in a contract that we know who's going to do what when. So there's no error.
Is there any public input on this?
Yes.
No, no. It's time for public input. We beat this to death.
Barbara Beer, two thirteen, so far, I'd just like to suggest that, um, this be detailed in a contract. Okay? Um, that the hours that the individual entities are going to care for be delineated in the contract specifically. Um, when these ladies contacted me, there's actually one that was their spokesperson. I was absolutely appalled and it's on a Labor Day weekend, a three day weekend after church on a Sunday. So it's in the middle of the day and after, since you've already discussed all the other issues, there is, the health department was my, a very strong concern of mine because they can lose their license and that's going to go into the paper. It's going to be on the city that we were not complying with the health department requirements. Um, one of the issues in here I mentioned was that the waitress had no clue whether there was any soap or disinfectant and neither did the cook. Neither one of them anywhere in the entire building. There was no soap known to these two people. So my next question is, first of all, I would not eat in there. Okay? Second of all, where are the employees washing their hands? And where are they going to the bathroom and then washing their hands? And I believe Mr. Would, Mr. Daniels and I talked about briefly before council meeting. Um, there's only one set of bathrooms, which means the employees, which is something the health department would look to, okay? Are also using that same bathroom that has no soap and no disinfectant and a dispenser that doesn't exist anymore because it keeps falling off the wall. So I'm surprised we haven't got nailed on it already. So this set needs to be taken care of right away, whether it's on the cities, city to build a health, a, a soap dispenser that can't be pulled off the wall. I think Mr. Daniel suggested it use concrete block if you have to, but get something there that will not be broken off or stolen, uh, and do it before we get nailed on this. Now that it's come up, thanks to me, thanks to my little church going ladies, okay, what they encountered, um, it's in the news now. No, I'm not kidding. Um, so we need to take care of this right away because this is, this makes me sick to my stomach, especially in this day and age. Thank you very much. But it should probably go in the contract with Touchstone. Or, and the golf course, right? Or, and the golf course, right? We got three contracts. The, the golf, golf nineteenth holes, one entity. Touchstone is another.
Golf ones will be merged. And my guardian angel sent me a section of the, the proposal that Touchdown gave us. It says, uh, restrooms, all course restrooms shall be maintained daily. To provide clean and sanitary facilities for the users and employees of the course. Soap, towels, toilet paper shall be provided in adequate quantities at all times. So we will provide the paper and all that stuff, but they will do the, and that's in the scope of work.
Disinfectant, hand disinfectant? That should, that's not on, that's not on the list you just read. Go in the contract though, on who's going to supply this stuff. I can go to Los Algodones and buy a gallon of it for about five bucks.
We, we're responsible providing the toilet paper, the.
Disinfectant.
You're making a contract.
Thank you.
We are beating this to death.
Counsel honor room air, uh, just wanted to clarify something. Uh, you can't renegotiate a contract that's not renegotiable. Nineteenth hole has a contract out there. Basically, it was written on a bar napkin that holds them not responsible for anything. For twelve years. So for us to say that we can now hold them accountable, you can, you have no recourse to hold them accountable. So if you're going to get anything, I feel bad for Touchstone, but it's going to be put on them. Because as you seen, if you look up tunnels on council, nineteenth hole basically has nothing. They pay five percent to the city. Five hundred dollars a month, that's it. And that's good for twelve years. So when you're asking about who's, how are you going to hold nineteenth hole? You have no, we, how you can hold the bar or whoever, they have, you have no recourse to hold them responsible for anything. Per the contract that's been reassigned twice now. So just for that, so thinking that somehow you're going to have. Touchstone plus nineteenth hole come with an agreement. Nineteenth hole doesn't have to agree to anything. Their contract state and it's not negotiable.
No, go ahead, Rick.
Uh, the nineteenth hole, um, had problems with their health department inspection. So I use that as an opportunity to get an agreement from them. That they would maintain the restrooms when they, and that's not, and the reason. It's, it has, it wasn't public information. So. So they, uh, comes as an annual inspection of all restaurants and. They had problems with. Nineteenth hole with passing all of their, uh, requirements. And so we helped them because there were some items, like there was a hole in the pole in storage. So we did fixes and that was part of the agreement for us to help them on. Getting through the health department that they would assume this. Restaurant maintenance.
That's on there? That's on their contract?
No, it's not on the contract, but they've, they've agreed to it. And. And, but Sean's right. I mean, we can't unilaterally.
Right.
Uh, change in a contract.
But it, but is this. Okay, so the, but the nineteenth golf course closes down. They have OSHA requirement that they have to provide restrooms. So they could technically get a violent, forget the city contract, they could, we could call in then therefore the, um.
OSHA and.
OSHA and the health department. So this is way bigger than us. You have to have public restrooms in a restaurant. So they close it too. Therefore, they must maintain.
Right, Wade.
It sounds like we have to cross our fingers for them to maintain. They, the, the restrooms will be there. They're, they're providing the restrooms. But in the contract, it says that, uh.
You can close the bathroom.
Touchstone will provide all that to the golf course. So when the golf course closes.
We can close the restroom.
And, and then at night, but you have to have a restroom at the restaurant. You have to have one. And when the golf course closes, they, they get a bunch of people in there. They use soap, toilet paper, whatever. There's nothing that says nineteenth hole has to stock all that.
But we have, and we have, uh, all of, an abundance of supplies and.
Provide them.
Nineteenth full staff knows where that is. Because Matt does, shows them all new wait, waitresses, new cooks that come in. He shows them where the supplies are.
Yeah, I mean, I can't imagine, we can't ask them, can you, one, I mean, they're adults and responsible, right? I mean, bring them up to council, bring them before. I get it. There's no contract, but.
But they have to, they have to have an operating restroom and it has to be in sanitary condition.
Your honor, who's negligent right now? Uh, we're talking about cleaning a bathroom. Who's negligent? So, so can we get this thing cleaned once a day, checked on a couple of times a day? We're, we're, we're sitting here arguing over a bathroom.
No, it will be done as the way.
Okay, good, Wade. Oh yeah, I saw, as the council done with their questions and their comments, Sean.
Hate to beat a dead horse, but, uh. Now's the opportunity is us helping that organization or business get. Now's the time to add an addendum and make it a sign and agreement. Well, next time there's an issue with the health department. So right now, we're trying to alleviate costs to the city by contracting with Touchstone, but yet. If nobody cleans it, then parks and directions are going to have to go down there and clean it. So not making sense. You need something concrete is substantial to hold whoever accountable. If it's nineteen toll after closure and next time you have a health inspection, they fail it, it will say, hey, we'll help you out. But here's a new addendum to your contract that says you will be responsible for the maintenance, including other bathrooms. After hours and a golf course is clean. A verbal agreement is about as good as, well, counsel Campbell can tell. Verbal grain is best, as good as attorney can explain it to whoever, which party. So you need something that's going to hold whoever accountable.
Right, thank you.
Your honor.
Yes, Zach.
Public bathroom at Manny Morris Park would resolve all of this, correct? Then it would just be a bathroom for the golf course and the restaurant, but unfortunately we have a park and a river access for the public that has no bathroom. So once again, we're arguing over who cleans a bathroom. I will, I'll go down there and clean it. I don't care.
Thank you. Go for a discussion. We'll call for a motion in a second. We have a motion. We have a second. Thank you. Call for the vote.
There's a motion. I'm, I'm, I'm totally confused.
Adopt resolution. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifty-seven approving the amendment. Twenty twenty-six and in golf course maintenance.
I got it. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Pageant.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's the end of consent counter. Finally. Number twenty-three, provide direction on the lead California cities, AKA Cal cities proposed bylaws amendments to be considered at the general assembly.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to be quick through these items. Um, the first one is the lead California cities is proposing, uh, bylaws, changes. A bylaw, changes to their bylaws. Uh, to me, this is all inside baseball. It's insignificant. Not worth it, but there's certainly no objections to organizing themselves as they want. They want to go to a bunch of different caucuses. That's internal business. So I, I think, uh, Counselor Campbell ought to be given the authority to vote for that.
All right, is we need a motion to approve?
I move to approve twenty-three.
Approve, the proposed bylaw amendments.
Yeah.
We got a motion in a second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pageant.
Yes.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
Twenty-four, review economic development program funded by ten percent. Tax revenues received from cannabis businesses.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Hello.
I'm sorry, you're, um, um, I'd like to make, make a motion to continue this item, uh, so I can further educate myself on, on this fund. Continue to next meeting.
Maybe we have a motion to continue this item. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
That we need to do now for it, right, Rick?
No. It's still. You just need to adjust some things. Call for the vote.
I've, do we already nominate? Councilmember Campbell.
Uh, yes.
Uh, Councilmember Evans, Merritt.
Yep.
Pageant.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, twenty-five is approve a budget adjustment of a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars plus a patrol cost estimated at seventeen thousand. With a twenty-five hundred dollar start cost for equipment for supplemental law enforcement services for the remainder of fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. Um, funding to come from marijuana tax portion of the general fund reserve. And authorize the mayor to sign amended schedule eight to twenty-four amendment two, contract number ninety-nine S. Three seven six with the county sever, you know, adding an additional patrol unit to the schedule.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as you recall, uh, there was a request for adding two additional deputies. Uh, they're in the budget. Uh, council didn't do that, but you instructed me to work with the sheriff's office. To get supplemental lawn, uh, patrol. So, um, I met with, uh, Captain Tarangle. And, uh, attached is his memo, uh, and then it's been carried forward and staffed for. It's about two hundred thousand a year for a bunch of overtime to give. One officer twenty-four hours and then the second officer for twenty of twenty-four hours. Uh, through overtime. So, uh, plus there's car and there's, uh, startup cost. So this represents, uh, a pro rate of share of two hundred thousand a year. So it's a hundred and seventy-five, uh, for the remainder of this fiscal year. So you'll have almost twenty-four hour protection, but it will be more than what we've had. Which was, I think, your goal.
So next year when this comes up again, it's only going to be the hundred and seventy-five thousand for the officer.
No, this will be.
They'll pay the startup costs again.
Uh, yeah, and it's still going to.
Now, there shouldn't be. And there shouldn't be a car cost.
Right, so, okay.
We don't have a, like, this is a contract just for one year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Additional service.
Yep.
Additional service. We already did two point five million, so no, it'll increase. It mean, it's coal every year. It goes up a percentage.
You're right. I, I, I think we need it with crime up so much right now. I. Deal considering, I believe they wanted to charge us eight hundred.
Eight hundred thousand dollars.
Two.
Yeah.
Yeah, but just, just to clarify, crime's down in the city. It's not a.
Well. I mean.
Just for everybody. I want to make sure they know.
I understand. It will help keep it.
It will, yeah. Zach.
Um, about five weeks ago, my car got broken into. I, I tell you what, I, I was, I was shocked. Now, they took some change. Some sunglasses, a Skinner knife that I miss. Um, all can be replaced. The one thing they took from me that they can't replace is my peace of mind. Because if you come in my front door, you got to tangle with me. I, I have at it, you know what I mean? Um, unfortunately, after that, I, I went to Rick and I, I said, you know, the, the last proposal by the sheriffs was a little high. We, we weren't ready for that kind of money. Um, but I, I want to say something. Um, Rick said he has a new number. I said, great, what is it? It's this number. That's workable. That's almost workable every year. I'm, I'm, you know, and mind you, I, I'm not the first person that says, you know, there, people are going to say tonight. Zach Longacre proposed to have sheriffs added. What's going on here? Let me give you an example right now that no one thinks of. Um, we, we have retail cannabis in this town and, uh, under state law. The state allows city municipals to vote whether they have armed security guards or not. We have five dispensaries now, no armed security guard. I can walk into any of these places with a handgun. I, I'm just saying. And if a patrol officer's on his way to have the two landing, there's no one to take it. So, so when people say, why are you asking to add sheriffs? We need them. We, we, we need them. You know, uh, our, our state has involved new laws that let criminals out every single day. And like I said, the, the stuff that was stolen from me is no big deal. Hundred dollars worth of stuff. It's replaceable. But now every morning I wake up at two AM, at four AM, and I walk around my house. That's peace of mind. You know, and, and I take myself as somebody tough, you know, I, I handle my own. But how about the people that can't? So I, I'm all for this. I, 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 you can ask Rick, I, I request. Um, I want to see this happen. We, it's time. So if you think two hundred thousand dollars to, to have some peace of mind is a lot, you can ask our captain. It, it's not. We, we're bottom of the barrel for what we pay for in police. We, it really is. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Captain.
Your honor.
I can't imagine you're coming here to argue against this, but.
You know, just for some clarification, and this is just for overtime money to fill a gap. Um, ideally, positions need to be added to make that gap filling sustainable. Um, depending on overtime can sometimes be problematic as people get burned out. Daily overtime can sometimes be a chore to get people to sign up for. So this was just a stopgap measure to provide for the security of the city. We're encountering more and more violent people. Aggravated assaults are up in the county. Over a hundred percent aggravated assaults are up in Needles over the last five years, almost eighty percent.
Had a couple on officers lately too, right?
We've had deputy assaults in the city of Needles are up four hundred percent over the last five years. So we're encountering more and more armed people, people with knives, people with guns. Um, it's an industry standard where it is some of these violent calls, you have to have at least a two deputy response. Just like when someone hits a power pole and the power goes down. You don't just have one guy respond to fix the power pole because there are safety issues involved there. You need more than one deputy to respond to a lot of these violent, uh, potentially violent calls. Additionally, there's more and more scrutiny on law enforcement to deal with people who have mental health issues. A lot of times that requires additional personnel. When we have someone who's got a mental health issue and they need treatment, we have to transport them to Colton. There, I had a regional medical center. That takes someone off the street for a day.
Eight hours at least.
To get there and back. So these are just some of the issues we're facing. And we need additional staffing to be able to accomplish that. And we need an additional vehicle to ensure that we have. Vehicle available to respond to the calls for service.
It's VR vehicle, right?
Yeah, let me ask you a question since you're here. What are the chances we're going to have to look to funding body cameras?
That is coming down the road. Um, we've done studies department-wide on that and tests department-wide. It's gotten to the point now where it's going to happen, probably next year. And so, yeah, those costs will have to be passed on.
Okay, thank you.
Your honor.
Go ahead, Ellen.
Um, I, um, I just want to say that I was one of the persons that did vote against, um, the increase. Uh, based on the crime statistics that we were provided by the sheriff's department. But, um, I, I have noticed a problem with people's cars. And there was a situation that happened with me where I called the sheriff. I got called by a citizen to please come to Needles Point Liquor Store. And I went down there and some woman had beat the holy bejesus out of another woman and she was bleeding. And I had her outside and we called for help, but there was an emergency. but there was an emergency that night. There was an emergency and it involved guns and the, you know, it took several calls to find out what was going on, and I had to play the trump card, like who, who was calling when I called the station. I said, hey, I'm waiting out here. But the officers were all together in a very serious situation, and they weren't able to come down, um, to assist with this woman that had been, um, so violently attacked by a crazy person. So, um, there are, there are situations. I, I welcome having, um, you know, right now, this Band-Aid stopgap, um, to happen so that we can have a little bit more peace of mind. I have had my home, um, violated, not recently, but it was horrible. It's a very, it, it's, having your home robbed, uh, it's like being raped. It's not a fun thing, and there are, um, I don't know, it's just, I don't know, this last, past year has been very hard with people losing their minds and committing crimes, so, uh, I, um, I really, uh, would like to see this be passed, um, because I, it's a step forward in having a lot more security, um, for us, at least having someone patrolling around and not just one officer. I think in the middle of the night, they only have one officer.
Is that a motion?
Your Honor.
I'm, I'm motioning, I'm making a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Right. All right, we have a motion to second any further discussion. Call for the vote. Thank you, Captain.
Yes, to approve, sorry.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, twenty-six, authorize attendance at the International Convention of Shopping Centers Recon Conference at the Las Vegas Convention Center, December fifth through the seventh, twenty twenty-one, using funds from the City Council Travel Per Diem account.
Right, Mr. Mayor, this is our, uh, business recruitment, uh, retail business recruitment, uh, main event. Uh, anybody wishing to go, raise your hands and we'll get you registered to go.
I'll do it. I ain't done it yet.
My hand's raised.
Zach, Ellen, Kristen, you go?
It was, um, I asked earlier, I, if I could not go to every, if I could possibly go like two of the three days, and so, I mean, I can try about them.
It, you pay for three days, but if you can only attend two, that's.
Okay, then maybe put me tentative, but, yeah.
But let me work.
Okay, I'd like to.
Bringing businesses to town.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes, yes.
I'm down, let's do it.
Now that would be a free go, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you, but you, you can't all be together talking about, um, business city, but.
We can't tag team in and out.
Yeah, yeah, right, exactly. You can tag.
We can talk about Tupperware?
So you're allowed to, you're allowed under the Brown Act or express exemption or exception that allows you attend public events like this, you know, but you can't huddle over in the corner and talk about what your vote's gonna be on such and such item.
So, you want to, I have a place to stay. Save us some money, but.
Oh, yeah, I have a place to stay.
So, Ellen?
Yes.
Kirsten? Uh.
Zachary?
Wade? See ya. Okay, just let me know for sure.
And, yeah, I have a place to stay. I don't need anything from the city, so, yeah.
Okay.
And I'll go again if everything's good.
Okay. So, there needs to be a motion.
Yep.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Um, what's the second call for the vote?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, twenty-seven, provide direction on League of California Cities' proposed resolutions. Resolution calling upon the governor and legislators to provide necessary funding for California Public Utilities Commission to fulfill its obligation to inspect railroad lines to ensure the operators are removing illegal dumping graffiti in homeless encampments that degrade the quality of the life and result in the increased public safety concerns for communities and neighborhoods that, uh, but the railroad right away.
I want to make a motion to approve twenty-seven as long as it doesn't impose a new tax through the CPUC.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Second, we have a second call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, twenty, it's approve the League's online sales tax equity resolution and direct the city Cal Cities voting delegate to support the resolution with Cal Cities' proposal amendments. At the annual Cal Cities Conference in Sacramento on September twenty-second through twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, authorize the city manager to send a letter to Cal Cities General Resolution Committee indicating the city's support for the resolution. And I had gotten a letter from Rancho Cucamonga, Cucamonga wanting us to support this also.
So, the issue is, Amazon has a fulfillment center in San Bernardino. And so when people from Needles or anywhere else in, in, within that service area, uh, when they order something from Amazon and it comes from that building, San Bernardino gets the sales tax. This would, if you ordered from Needles, even though it came out of there, there's revenue sharing between San Bernardino and we get a portion of that sales tax. So it's to recognize that e-commerce, uh, should, a portion of that sales tax should come to the jurisdiction at which the final delivery to the customers made. So it, it improves, uh, our sales tax situation.
I'll get a piece of the pie.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve, to vote yes on that.
I second it.
You know, motion to second, any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, resolution number twenty. Twenty twenty-one dash fifty-five, appointing a primary and alternate to Mojave Desert and Mount Integrated Race Joint Powers Authority bird who were also served as a delegate and offset to the solid race advisory task force. Ellen was the, uh, alternate on this, and she wants to be the delegate, so we're gonna appoint her, and is there anybody that wants to be the alternate on this, uh, committee?
I'd say Tom.
Yeah, Tom can't make it. She works to anybody. All right, we do a motion with just, uh, Ellen as the delegate?
Make a motion to approve Ellen as the delegate.
We have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Remember saying any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Ellen, you're it.
Well, thank you. I, I want someone else to be it with me. Think about it.
We're gonna have to convince them. Number thirty, update on the progress of the road being completed at skate park.
Okay, one month ago, council sent, uh, staff on Eastern to improve the skate. Uh, so, one thing that's been done is the old fencing has been removed that's right on the edge of old. We now have a new perimeter fencing, which gives, uh, when you come out skating out of the ball, you don't have fence or bicycles. So that's been done. Uh, we have some surplus rubber coated metal benches that we're gonna take up to the skate park that's where kids have more places to sit down. Uh, we are working with the sheriff's office, uh, to fund high-definition prosecutable quality video of vandalism and, uh, uh, there've been some physical incidents, bullying of, uh, of younger kids. Um, and then we're also researching what paints and or sealants and the use for the skate park. We've gone in and patched all the little chipped out, uh, portions of the, the skate park. That's all been patched. Now we want to look at, uh, what, what is the right treatment? A resident has offered to place, uh, three or four trees around the skate park. Uh, we want to accept that, and then after the rehabilitation, um, uh, I, it says staff, but I'm, I'm, somebody will organize a skate competition.
Your Honor?
Zach, would you like to volunteer for that?
I, I, I'd like to speak on this. Um, thi- this was a project that I, I didn't come at the city with. I, I came at the community with, and I, I got, uh, a lot of outcry. A lot of people wanted to donate. So, when the city asked to work on this, I decided, let, let's see what they're gonna do, because, you know, that skate park's twenty years old. It could last another twenty years if we put enough love into it. And, uh, that's kind of why when Rick said, let us do this, well, this can be reoccurring. It's not just counselor getting the dads together and throwing some paint down. Um, Maryland Matthews is adopted tree program. I'd like to see some grass up there. Uh, they pan on painting it gray i- if the paint's gonna take, and then I have a local artist that lives in town. He is an amazing spray can artist. He's willing to come in free, do all the work. Um, instead of allocating seven hundred and fifty dollars for a skate competition, I have multiple nonprofits that will put those on. I would rather take that seven hundred and fifty dollars and put it towards paint, because my artist paints with spray cans. So, uh, I'm still meeting with him. Um, my theme's kind of gonna be cartoony desert style, incorporate city symbols, and, and make it a place where the, a- and, and what we're painting is the bottom of the pools and a couple of the little fun boxes. That's it. So it's gonna be nice and gray and clean and no more swastikas and, excuse me, penises and FUs and, and everything else that's been in there. A- and hopefully with, I bring in this artist, a- and Brett's local, he lives here. I- if it gets messed up, he can come up and repaint it. You know what I mean? But, uh, I went and visited Venice Beach a couple of weekends ago. They have a skate park, uh, right next to their old police department they tore down. The police department was all graffiti, their whole wear, the big towers. Um, they left three walls. They let everyone spray paint them. The skate park's not touched. It is fifty feet away from these spray painted walls, and mind you, the palm trees at these spray painted walls are painted, but that skate park's not touched, because they gave them art to look at and they give them a place to do it. So I'm, I'm hoping we get a wall up in that park soon to, to let our, our, our artists in the, in the city get down, but, uh, I'd like to see Brett come and do this. Um, with the city doing it, i- it's gonna be reoccurring. So, I'd like to see twenty more years out of Tony Hawk's Skate Park. My kids used it. They're grown. Your kids use it. I know other people's kids use it. This, this is a great project and, and a minimal amount of money. So, uh, I, I hope to see this accomplished and accomplished soon. Uh, I have a local skate shop owner that's ready to throw a contest. I have cannabis companies that sponsor professional skateboarders. They're ready. We just want, want it pretty, and, uh, with the rest of the park renovations, I, I think this is key. That whole top of the hill's gonna be brand new and beautiful for our children, so that's where I am at with this.
And, and we may auction off, uh, Zach on a skateboard, uh.
Hopefully I don't break a hip.
Extra, extra fundraiser.
Hopefully I don't break a hip, but I'm not scared. That, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Number thirty-one.
Okay.
Discussion regarding Senate Bill two six two statewide bail schedule, and John had something to oh, do this.
Well, I just, uh, mentioned to the city manager, when I saw this, I looked it up and it looked like it had been, uh, uh, pulled. So, it, but it may be coming back next year. It, it probably will, I assume, because this all started with Prop twenty-five, which the voters rejected, and then the sponsor came back. Um, might be Spun Your Thunder, I apologize.
No, 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 no.
It was, it was Prop twenty-five and, and that was to eliminate cash bail. Then, um, the legislature took, uh, a stab at this, and because of some events involving, uh, a killing, uh, they decided that the timing was wrong, so they're pulling it back, but they've indicated that they're probably gonna come back to, to this next year, but you don't know what the wording is gonna be. You know, they may change, they may change it up a little bit. So, um, obviously you're free to talk about it, because it's on the agenda tonight, but you may want to wait and see what the final wording is, um, you know, before you all make a final decision on what you want to do.
I would actually still like to vote on it and saying that we opposed it, that we opposed and sent it to the bill. Um, and I would actually like the captain's, uh, uh, views on it, too, and we didn't do it now, but.
There was, no, I just add, there was a, a California Supreme Court ruling in March, I think of this year, that basically held that it's unconstitutional to hold somebody, um, in jail pre-trial if the only reason that they're being held is that they can't afford to pay, pay bail. So you've got the, you know, the, the, older lady who's charged with the first offense that she's ever committed, and normally she'd be out on bail, but she can't afford to pay bail, and so the Supreme Court said, you know, you can't hold somebody simply because they can't afford to, to pay bail. So that's having an impact, that court ruling in and of itself.
Yeah. You have an opinion, Captain?
Well, I, I, I think this is an end around by the legislature. I believe there was something on the ballot that was voted down by the voters. And so now Sacramento is deciding that they know better and are gonna do it anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I think that speaks for itself. But, yeah, I think one of the issues was zero bail, or we're seeing this in a lot of other big cities when there's no bail. New York, Chicago, repeat offenders get released and released and become more violent and violent, and you know what crime rates do when that happens, so.
And I believe it's gonna come back, like John said, uh.
There's no, it's a moot point to vote on something that does not exist. He pulled it, he's going to have to rewrite it, and there are other things. If this is not a focus, this should not be a focus on no bail. We already have no bail. We already have it. We see it every day, especially in Needles, we see it. So that's happening, and we don't have any control over that right now with the pandemic. But there's other things hidden in this bill, if you read the whole thing. They want to force judges to give money back, um, if you're not charged in sixty days. They, um, the DA doesn't often charge for misdemeanors for three hundred and sixty-five days, and felonies are longer. So there's a lot of things, this could be three separate bills, but there's a lot of things in here, and for us to vote on it, I mean, I think it's horrible. Personally, I think it's really horrible, but I don't know that we can vote on something that doesn't exist anymore, because it's in the newspaper that the man who wrote it pulled it because of the woman that got murdered four days ago. So it's been, it's not even up for grabs now. So I just wanted to say that before we vote.
Okay, but we can still vote to oppose it. Ed?
I have a motion.
I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes, I, I do oppose it.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre? Thank you.
All right, see attorneys report.
Yes, just briefly, some of the items that we've been working on, on behalf of the city are uh, representing the city. We continue to represent the city in the NPA and the lawsuit that was filed by the Rio Buena Vista Association. In addition to that, um, in an effort to clean up the city, the council has made it a priority to, uh, deal with code enforcement issues in the city, and so we've been working with the code enforcement department and the city manager's office and assistant city manager on, uh, approximately twenty-five, uh, code enforcement and receivership cases. So code enforcement cases where somebody violates the code, we go out, we cite them, and, and we deal with it that way. A receivership case is under the Health and Safety Code where a property is derelict, perhaps you can't find the owner, and so the court, we, we request that the court appoint a receiver to take o- control of that property and correct the code violations where you can't find an owner to make those corrections. And then once the property's rehabilitated, then it's sold, and then the receiver recovers their, their costs, and the city can recover its costs as well. So we've got about twenty-five, uh, code enforcement receivership cases pending with, I think, some more that are coming, that we'll be addressing at, at the next council meeting. And then, um, we are also representing the city in a sequoia matter involving the Lower Colorado River. We've advised the city in connection with sequoia, uh, and CUP land use matters, uh, primarily related to the can- cannabis projects in the city. Um, we also assist the city, um, as needed in reviewing live scan reports to determine whether applicants that want to work in the marijuana industry in the city. to determine whether applicants that want to work in the marijuana industry in the city of Needles qualify. The city has adopted certain crimes, somebody's convicted of them, that they cannot work in that industry. So we have to, a background check is done, live scan reports are done, and we, we assist in interpreting those live scan reports because some of the crimes are a bit gray. And so there's, you, you, you have to look at them very carefully. Also, uh, as needed, advise the city on labor and employment matters and questions. Advising the city also on Political Reform Act questions when somebody thinks that they may have a potential conflict. And for the new council member, um, I gave you my, uh, card. So if you ever have a question about a conflict of interest, whether you have one, give me a call, you know, preferably a day or more ahead of time, uh, so that I can give you good advice. And, uh, in addition to that, we, uh, assist this, we've assisted the city with, uh, reviewing and revising contracts. And then last month, we worked with the city on seeking state funding for the emergency water well, uh, project and helped with sequoia issues related to that and also the emergency declaration that the council adopted. And then lastly, I was just, uh, somebody had just emailed me from the county of Riverside, the, uh, some of the election results that were coming in. And, but we probably won't know for sure what the final result is, I assume, for, for a little while, uh, as they count ballots. And, and so we're sort of in election season, uh, at the moment. And, uh, when, when we hit that time of year, it's not uncommon for folks to hit social media and start talking about the election and the results that they like or don't like. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to remind the council of the new rules under the Brown Act that apply, um, which candidly make no sense, but they are the rules. And, and by the way, when I tell you guys about a rule that makes no sense at all, I don't, I don't write them, you know?
It's from the state guarantee.
I didn't agree with.
Yeah, job. And so when it comes to the topic of social media, um, obviously you all have a First Amendment right to engage in your comments about the election or, or, or even city issues. Um, but under the new rules, if another council member likes or comments on, so if the mayor posts something and then another couns- just one other council member, normally it takes a majority of you to violate the Brown Act. So you'd have to have a forum. But on social media, if the mayor posts something and, uh, council member Longacre comments on it, it's violation. In fact, if he even likes it.
Hence why I've been so silent on that.
So i- if he even likes it, it's a violation. If he posts an emoji, it's a violation. So if anybody's posting anything on the council or any of the other boards, don't comment on it.
And, and that's our governor.
Oh, yeah.
Think for that, by the way.
This is for political issues only, not our children's birthday parties?
Well, if it's not about city business, then you can like it. You know, it's when talking about remain to, remain to city issues. So for example, if somebody were posting a comment about the election and how it affects the city of Needles and, you know, and how we had to raise our rates because of policies, uh, that were implemented at the state level or we're, you know, dealing with something here locally and, and also to comment on it, potential Brown Act violation. So, uh, but yes, it's issues that are germane to city business, not birthday parties and that, that sort of thing. But I just wanted to remind you of that because it's an odd rule. And the whole idea behind the Brown Act was to avoid meetings of a quorum of the council outside of a publicly noticed meeting that the public has an opportunity to attend. So this doesn't really fit into that, that purpose of the Brown Act, but there it is.
The public has an opportunity to comment on my post.
The public does, absolutely.
A smiley face.
Yeah.
It's a violation. That's crazy.
So it's, it's not.
City manager's report.
Through the hour, I'll, I'll pass. Uh, I may send you a very short report in writing over the next.
Hey, John, one other thing, if you have any updates on Rio Buena Vista, can we get that on the next meeting?
Yeah, we will. As soon as we have something to report, we will meet with the council in close session and also the utility board. Um, but we don't yet. So we, you know, there's no point in meeting with you and saying we don't have anything to report. So as soon as something happens, um, that we have to report, we'll meet with you in close session.
Thank you. Counsel request. Councilmember Campbell?
No, I can't even think anymore. Sorry.
Councilor Evans? Councilmember Merritt?
Yeah, sorry. I just wanted to say the museum is open, um, the Needles Regional Museum, downtown Needles. Um, it's open Monday through Saturday from ten to two. So come on by. It's a great place and learn about Needles. And that's all. Um, oh, also, do we have a meeting in two weeks? Because I know we had taken it off.
We do.
But we do have it now. Okay, I just wanted to verify from my own knowledge. Thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor Pageant?
Yeah, I'd just like to, uh, review on October tenth and coming up for the ten-ten celebration of the Republic of Chinese Independence and hope you all come out. Ten o'clock in the morning, tenth of October.
Nice event.
Um, a couple of things, but I just wanted to know if we could write a statement, a community, Barbara had brought up that with, um, with, um, Obernolte about a community statement of opposition of placement in Newberry Springs of the, um, violent predator.
Yeah.
So that parents could, um, we can send in opposition because they're trying to place the violent predator in Newberry Springs, which is, you know, what, a hundred miles from Needles. So we can s- all send in our opposition to that. Um, second thing, October is breast cancer awareness month. So I was wondering, and it's, um, dyslexia awareness month, which is very dear to my heart since both my kids have dyslexia. If we could wear, I don't know if everybody agrees, if we could wear twelfth pink for breast cancer awareness and then on the twenty-six red for, um, dyslexia awareness. I don't know if that's a problem for everybody, but just kind of a support those two major, um, near and dear to my heart, both of those. To, to support our community. Second, a thousand things, I guess, but we're gonna narrow it down, just to be home the two things for the, the year. Um, the fun fair is December first, for first weekend in December. Um, Tina would like, uh, wanted me to remind everybody. Um, Zach, are we doing a trunk or treat?
Uh, yes, uh, the thirtieth, uh, the, uh, the lady's already asked and I've already sat down with Rick on it.
Okay, good.
I think it's Saturday, the thirtieth was yesterday.
And then, uh, we need to get a vet in town that's been brought in multiple months. So if we can.
Veterinary.
Veterinary for the dog animal shelter. And then I'll save everything else.
All right, Zach?
Okay, I got a couple. Um, Jack Smith Park, we, we got some work along the beaches. We really got to think about, are we gonna keep our kids in that little gas filled inlet? I, I pulled in at eight o'clock Sunday night to trailer the boat and there were six boats parked over the kids. Well, I actually went back Monday to make sure that it wasn't damaged, which it wasn't. But, uh, something to think about, um, maybe clearing that first little beach right there off the first point and making it the kids' area. I know it's open water, but, um, it's ridiculous. Um, second of all, the corner of the parking lot closest to Bureau Bay from people walking down the dirt hill is deteriorating. You only got a couple more years before the corner of that parking lot has nothing under it. So something to look at. Um, the trench on West Broadway in front of the Chevy Center still, that we need to do something, uh, with as much construction vehicles that are going over it. It, you hit it at forty miles an hour and it hurts. Where are we with Caltrans? They haven't touched our on. Not touched, not touched. And they're here. They're here doing that, whatever they're doing in the middle.
Basically, they told us to write Smitty.
Okay, all right. Um, uh, underpass? Still nothing? No?
They keep giving us.
Gotcha.
I've, I've seen you guys.
Gotcha.
The chain, but, um, maybe if council, rather than also a, a resolution, uh, asking, uh.
It, it would thin our traffic problem out at, at North K and River Rock. Um, do we have plans for our grassy knoll yet? Are those coming up?
Yes, uh, they're being designed right now by landscape architect.
Um, okay, and my last two ones, uh, first off, I'd like to think, say thank you and, and congratulations to Jess Fugoso. He got his CDL. That is big for public works. People don't know, now two people can drive the street sweeper. Two people can drive the loaders. I would like anyone that's boots to our ground in our company, our city worker, if you want your CDL, step up. Come get it. Let, let us get you certified. The more people that know how to drive this equipment, the better off we are. I like that. And on that note, and the sweet street sweeper note, I, I had a local resident, uh, dear to me, come to me about six weeks ago and wanted to come to a meeting and he hasn't yet. He basically said, as a city, we forgot to how to clean up our yard. And, uh, he means all of us, not the city staff, but all of us. And, uh, I'm gonna have to agree with him. Our overpass still has reflectors from when they popped them off the street to redo it. That's unacceptable. I am not gonna sign off on another crap order for crap work. I'm not doing it. I'm not wasting my taxpayers' money. Second of all, we, we really need to start focusing on cleaning up. I could do a cleanup every week and it's not putting a dent in it. You know, uh, this person said, Zach, come up to my house. It's Alfred Hernandez, good man. Come up to my house, Zach. If you find a piece of trash in my yard, I'll give you a hundred dollar bill. I said, I'm not taking that bet, Al. We, we need to focus on cleaning it up. Attractive. People aren't gonna come here and fill houses if the streets look like crap. And I don't mean the asphalt. There's trash everywhere. We, we bring in, and our planning commission brings in, uh, uh, certain landscaping. But we have zero rules for upkeep of landscaping. So these muskie trees they plant grow to the ground. They collect trash in every windstorm. It, it's ridiculous. Um, if we're gonna ask people to plant trees, let's ask them to plant them right, maintain them, you know? And, and, uh, also our, our biggest, our biggest moneymakers, our stores in town, are the worst looking. Go to Dollar General. The parking lot looks like a bus station parking lot. It's horrible. They make more money in town than anyone other than the dispensaries, but they can't staff enough people to clean? I, I'll clean up everybody's trash, but I'm one forty-seven-year-old, hundred and forty-pound man. I, sooner or later, the heat's gonna get me. We need to focus on this. It looks horrible. And, uh, I drive and walk these streets every day. Um, I don't know how everyone else is missing it. But this, you know, you want people here, you, you want a bigger town, you want stores? They ain't coming when it looks like crap. Thank you. That's all I got.
We'll give you ice and hand sanitizer.
I'll take it. I'll take it.
And tr- and trash cans.
Okay, I mean, when Paul had gone, I said the first meeting in October were pink. The second meeting will wear a red. And I can't remember what you said the red's for, but.
Dyslexia.
Dyslexia. Thank you. And, uh, on the case true, they have, have told us that railroad stores that it'll be about three months because it's with their attorneys. So we're making the phone call too and trying to see, we get some pressure on them to get that dealt with. I've been told they have to go back to Fort Worth. And also for citizens out there, I just want to remind you, county can help you with your utility bills and there's other assistance they can give you. City has a pay board for that if you need the assistance. And that, John, thank you.
Good night.